Good evening, and I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's Town Council meeting. Here it's November 17th, 2014, 7:00 PM. We're just a couple minutes after. We'll open tonight's meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, please.
Counselor Carrasco.
Present.
Counselor Clemmons.
Present.
Counselor Estrada.
Present.
Counselor Manah.
Present.
Counselor Moriarty.
Present.
Counselor Pellican.
Present.
Counselor Steves.
Present.
Counselor Vandal.
Present.
Counselor Vecchia.
Present.
Nine present.
Thank you. Agenda item number three, Consider and Accept Town Council Meeting Minutes of Monday, November 10th, 2014.
I'd like to abstain, please.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any clarification, corrections, questions? Seeing none, simple hand vote is fine, all those in favor?
Abstaining, I was in here.
And two abstentions. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Four, Subcommittee Reports. The first one is General Government. Counselor Clemmons.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually don't have official minutes, but we did have a meeting last Wednesday, November 20th, at 6:00 PM in the Rice Conference Room. There were a number of items that we did discuss. At present were members of the Airport Commission, also citizens members Holly Cristo and Mike Janes, and members of the committee were all present, Amelia Pellican, myself, and Conrad Vandal. We did discuss the net metering credit situation with Borrego Solar Systems. The town manager was very helpful, explained a lot of different items on the contract. There was quite a bit of discussion as to the value or not of this item, and we did vote, and it was a 3-2, to recommend, a favorable recommendation to council. The opposed were Counselor Vandal and Citizens Member Janes. They were looking forward to getting more information this evening before the actual vote here on council. We also discussed a possible amendment to the town bylaw concerning the Airport Commission. They were looking to change the term, quote, let's see, discuss the possible amendment to the bylaw which to reflect the following, and what they were looking to do, the Airport Commission was looking to have done, was, quote, "A non-residence may actively serve on the Southbridge Airport Commission providing that prospective members are resident of Massachusetts, prospective members have an aircraft at the Southbridge Municipal Airport, and that no more than two non-residents may serve actively on the Commission at one time." Again, there was a lot of discussion and concern from the Airport Commission that they just don't have enough members, and at times it's hard to have a quorum. So they explained how there are a lot of members, there are a lot of airport pilots and such that use our airport, invest in our airport, but, and would like to serve, would like to really take a more active role in helping the airport. Having gone through all this discussion, we did vote, and it was unanimous to recommend to council that previous town bylaw amendment, since that will be on tonight's agenda. And we also discussed the change in Schedule I to reflect the addition of a new position of Assistant Town Accountant as an MS-14 under the direction of the Finance Director/Town Accountant with a salary range of $49,088 to $58,722. And we again discussed the need for this or not. We went over all the job descriptions. We're currently in a position with the Accountant's Office that the person who was an assistant clerk with minimal, I say minimal, minimal authority to act when the Finance Director's out of town, or away on vacation, or sick, or anything, she has moved to another department, and so there is an opening. So that what they're looking is not to create officially a new position, there is an opening in that department, but to ratchet it up a bit, to make the position have a little more, a little more meat, as you might say, in that they could go over and do warrants and have a little more experience, a little more education. So that's what they're looking to do with that item, which is on tonight's agenda. That was voted 4-1. Mike Janes was the opponent on that with a favorable recommendation to council. And that's about my best recollection to the General Government Subcommittee meeting. We did just have a meeting earlier tonight at 6:15 to discuss the concerns that were raised last week in regard to the comparability study for the landfill, and so those minutes will obviously be forthcoming at the next meeting. And that's all I have right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
B, DPW, Counselor Vandal.
Thank you. The meeting of the DPW Subcommittee was held on Monday, November 10th, 2014, at 6:30 PM in the George Parent Community Room. I, in attendance, myself, Counselor Estrada, Clemmons, Manah, Moriarty, citizen members Mark Morin and Roger Cowett, interim town manager Kevin Pecos, DPW director Heather Blakely and Estelle Cowett. I call the meeting to order at 6:30 PM. Agenda item number one, vote to recommend the transfer of $17,100 from account number 6344, upgrade to the Dennison Hill Water Tank to account number 6335, engineering of Dennison Hill Tank, to pay final costs and close out of the project, and submit to council for ratification. A motion was made by Counselor Clemmons and seconded by Counselor Estrada. Mr. Cowett asked Ms. Blakely where the ice had come from inside the tank. She said it was very common to get ice in these types of tanks. When they started the project, they didn't expect the ice to be as big as it was, 20 feet high and 24 feet in diameter. I asked Mrs. Blakely when the project was started, she said, stated late April. She said it took weeks and weeks of water and heat on it to melt the ice. Ms. Blakely said they installed a mixer in the bottom of the tank. It's a low-energy mixer, but offers just enough agitation to keep the water from freezing again to that degree. Mr. Cowett asked if it could happen to the other tanks. Mrs. Blakely said the other tanks turn over much quicker, and they are larger diameter tanks, so they don't have the same tendencies to freeze as the smaller tank. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, 5 to 0. A motion was made by Counselor Clemmons and seconded by Chairman Vandal to adjourn. Vote by show of hands, all in favor, 5 to 0. I adjourn the meeting at 6:35 PM. Respectfully submitted, Justine French. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. C, Education and Human Services, Counselor Pellican.
I have no report and no meeting scheduled, and I just wanted to thank you for reading my meeting minutes last meeting. Thank you.
No problem, thank you. D, Planning and Development, Counselor Manah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I do not have any meeting minutes to read, but I do have a meeting scheduled for November 20th at 6:00 PM in the George Parent Conference Room. Thank you.
Thank you. E, Protections of Persons and Property, Counselor Carrasco.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have also no minutes to report, but we do have a meeting scheduled for this Wednesday at 6:00 PM in the George Parent Conference Room.
Thank you. F, Town Manager Search Committee, Counselor Carrasco.
Yes, the Town Manager Search Committee will be meeting this Thursday at 5:00 PM to continue to discuss, we are actually going to meet with the consultant, Mr. Don Johnson, will be in town, and we will be talking about the character and some of the questions that we have in regards to some of the still semifinalists that are still in question or potential candidates to move forward for the Town Council. But at this time, the committee has not made a recommendation for finalist, so we will continue to meet with Mr. Don Johnson this Thursday at 5:00 PM.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Five, Chairman's Announcements. I just have two brief ones. One, tomorrow is the Great American Smokeout, and I know, in fact, I was talking to a coworker today who was telling me that about 10 years ago, she quit cold turkey, and how healthy she's felt since then, and certainly would recognize, or rather encourage, anyone and everyone that does smoke, whether casually or habitually, hard as that may be at that point, to give it an effort to either go the day or stamp it out altogether. Or, you know, it's not exactly the same wishes for Westminster, obviously, but along that same idea about stamping it out for town. Secondly, just one last reminder and plug for the Big Old Turkey Bowl, which is coming up this weekend on Saturday at 6:30 PM at McMahon Field. No admission for this, however, we do encourage people bring in either nonperishable food items for food share, new unwrapped toys for Toys for Tots, and/or cash to go for these different organizations. There will be some T-shirts being sold at the event that the proceeds will go to these two nonprofits. The game itself will be preceded by punt-pass-kick competition, which will be open to all-area kids ages 6 to 12. That will begin at 5:30 PM. And certainly, while Webster has the bigger team in terms of numbers and perhaps even body size, I think Southbridge is looking pretty strong altogether at the moment. We have myself, the town manager, who has great endurance coming up those stairs, Vice Chairman Carrasco, Counselors Estrada, Pellican, and Steves, school committee members Congdon, Olivo, and Quinney, as well as Sergeant, well, Provisional Lieutenant Jose Dinghy, and the principal and vice principal at the middle high school, Melissa Earls and Anthony Kukasi. We also have one other that we're just waiting for confirmation on to round out that team, and encourage anyone and everyone to come on out and support Southbridge. Support us with any and all red that you may have for that game, as well as oxygen tanks, and certainly to kind of drive out that green from our field. And that's all I have, so I'll move it on to number six, which is Town Manager's Announcements.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Several items. First, free cash has been certified by the Department of Revenue, we received notification, and I just wanted to read to you a three or four sentence email that we received back from the Department of Revenue, because I think it says very good things about us and our staff. Karen, this is addressed to Karen Hanoise, Chief Financial Officer. Karen, as you know, we completed your certification of free cash. I just wanted to be sure you received the email with a letter of certification. As always, your submission was excellent and absolutely complete, and makes my job so much easier when that is the case. It's clear that you take a lot of time and care in preparing all of the required documentation, et cetera. It is not typical, believe me, for the Department of Revenue to say such glowing things back to towns, so it's a wonderful comment on Karen and her staff that they did that, and I want to be sure that was brought to the council's attention and the public.
True, Chairman, the Town Manager, you state the free cash is certified. How much is it certified? How much do we have?
I believe it's 1.1 million. Don't hold me to that.
Well, that's very important.
But, yes, it is, and I thought you had received a separate transmission on that.
I don't have one.
You clearly did not, so I will take care of getting you that. I thought you had already received it.
And just to add a comment, we have a budget of over $50 million, and we should have free cash for at least 10 percent. We should have free cash for at least $5 million. We don't have any savings. And seeing that you were also talking about this on the same subject, the audited financial statements for FY 2014, are they ready?
For FY 14, for the year that just closed?
Yes.
No. No, they would typically, that audit would typically come out December, January, unless they were really moving ultra quick, and you might see it in November, but that would be very rare.
Well, I was told that we probably have them in November.
Oh, well, I could stand corrected. That would be moving very quickly.
Well, can we find out from Karen Hanoise?
Sure, absolutely.
When we're going to get those?
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you.
Couple other things. Just this evening at a meeting, I became, it was brought to my attention, there is no sidewalk on Gulf Road as you approach the junior, senior high school, and I was somewhat shocked to hear that, since in Massachusetts, as you're aware, within a mile, folks walk. So I'll be looking into that and making some sort of a plan for you, and I'll get back to it, but I would dare say we've got to correct that. I just found out about it about 5 o'clock this evening, so I was surprised. Next item, there will be a Household Hazardous Waste Collection Day on Saturday, December 6th, 2014, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Casella Waste Services Facility at 165 Barefoot Road across from the landfill. Event is open to Southbridge and Charlton residents. No food or sanitary waste, no commercial waste, no latex-based paints will be accepted. There are complete details on their website for those who would like to get more information, and there's a 10-gallon limit for paint and chemical waste, so there's a wide variety of things, including appliances, that will be accepted, but folks can go on the website if they want to get more details about exactly what will and won't be taken. And I wanted to let the council know, the day after, thanks, day after Christmas, I'll be closing Town Hall. I don't think, Christmas occurs on a Thursday this year, as you probably know. We're open a half-day on Friday. I'm going to close that day. I'll be requiring the employees to either take paid time off, vacation day, personal day, or they can flex time those four hours the next week with the department head, work an hour late, come in an hour early, whatever. And last, I did want the council to know that I was not a football player in high school, I was a soccer player, but I am very excited about the game this Saturday, and while I'm not a football player, I did watch the Patriots last night, so I've got a lot of good ideas for plays that I'll give to the chair, who I'm sure will be the quarterback. And thank you.
All right, thank you. Glad to hear our kicker has some ideas. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Seven, Swearing In and Presentations. The first is from the Council on Aging, and we have Susan Chapin as the Chair of the COA.
Good evening, and my name is Chaplin, C-H-A-P-L-I-N, just as a correction.
There's a tape, thank you.
And yes, I'm chairperson of the Southbridge Council on Aging, and I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to address the council and the community and explain the function and duties of the council. As you know, Michael Trombley is our Executive Director, and he would have been here also this evening, but he had another meeting that he was required to attend. Members of the council board of directors include Ted Bartlett, our Vice Chair, Nitsa Diaz, Irene Montigny, Evelyn Petrelli, and Patricia Trehan. Irene has recently indicated that she regretfully will be resigning from the council, and I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Irene Montigny for her years of dedication and service to the Council on Aging. We currently have several openings for new members, and there are currently people that are interested, so we're looking forward to having some new people appointed to the Council on Aging in the near future. The Council on Aging is not a club, but a function of our municipal government as defined in Chapter 40 of the Mass General Laws. And those appointed to the council have a responsibility to represent and serve the needs of the elderly in our community. Funding is provided by the Town of Southbridge Budget under general funds of the Veterans/Council on Aging/Community Services Budget, Department 0543, and grants from the Massachusetts Executive Office of Elder Affairs. Based on the figures from the 2010 Census, there are 3,265 senior citizens living in Southbridge. As the Council on Aging, we endeavor to represent this population, promoting their well-being and encouraging their participation in the community by working closely with Mike Trombley and others in the community. Currently, the Council on Aging is offering an exercise program funded through the Massachusetts Office of Elder Affairs. This is an ongoing project, program. I understand it's been going on for 20 years at our senior center, and some of our participants have been participating for almost that length of time. The program is based on the health benefits of flexibility and strength. The program is led by Jennifer Reynolds and funded, as I said, through this grant from the Massachusetts Office of Elder Affairs. The program is held three mornings a week, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, 9 to 10, with an average attendance of 25, but our attendance continues to grow, and we've received much positive feedback on the program. I have a short story about the program. Several weeks ago, there were several, two med students from the University of Mass visiting Harrington, and they came to visit our exercise program to learn about the health benefits to exercise to the older generation. We invited them, these two young men, to join our program for an hour. By the end of the hour, they were saying, "We need more exercise." They could not keep up with us. And we have, as I said, we have some residents that have been participating in this program for 17 to 20 years. A portion of the grant this year will be used in the coming months for a wellness education series. We're going to be working with Tri Valley Elder Services, Harrington Hospital, and other agencies on this, and our goal is to hold monthly educational programs, health education programs, for our seniors. One of the goals for the coming year is preparation and distribution of a newsletter to keep citizens, seniors informed about programs and opportunities in the community, and also an updating of the information on the town's website. The Senior Center itself is open Monday through Friday from 8 to 4 and staffed by Mike Trombley, and anyone with questions or concerns is urged to call or visit during these hours. The phone number is 508-764-5436, and we encourage seniors to contact Mike if they have any questions or concerns. The Council on Aging will be meeting again on December the 9th at 11:00 AM. Our meetings are open meetings, we meet at the Senior Center. I would like to encourage anyone with an interest or concern to stop by and see how we conduct business. We are always open to suggestions for programs that would benefit all our seniors in Southbridge. And along with the Council on Aging, there are also other programs being offered in the community for seniors that I'd like to mention this evening. One is the Southbridge Senior Association. It's available for anyone to join, over the age of 60, to join. Dues for the association are $5 per year, and activities arranged by the association include a monthly luncheon held at the Senior Center for a cost of $2, bingo on Fridays, and trips throughout the year offered at group rates. Pat Mahan is president of this association, and Jim Julian is the treasurer and the coordinator. The association can be reached at the Senior Center also, or by calling 508-764-765-1985. There's a very active Latino elder program that meets at the community center on Tuesday and Thursday mornings. This program is sponsored through the Worcester-based Central Los Americas. There are currently over 40 people attending this program, and we'd like to see increased participation with that program with our Council on Aging. Tri Valley Elder Services rents space at our community center, and they prepare and deliver approximately 150 meals per day from the site. Our center is a Tri Valley-designated meal site, providing meals to those over 60 wishing to attend a noonday meal program. Suggested donation is $3 per meal, and reservations need to be made 48 hours in advance. This would be an opportunity for a hot meal and a time to socialize at our senior center. The phone number to make reservations is 508-764-1469. We urge any of the councils to stop by the senior center at any time, come join one of our exercise groups, or whatever. And if you have any questions, does anyone have any questions concerning Council on Aging and our role in the community?
I have just one. How can we, as a council, or the town itself, whether it's citizens or businesses, what can be done to help out the Council on Aging going forward?
Well, we can always use more funding. I think your support is very important for us. We will be having some new members, I said, coming forth to be approved by the council to serve. Just a general, I think, support of our programs.
Excellent.
And we need to get, the Council on Aging itself needs to get the information out to the seniors, and that's where a newsletter, I think, is very important. We haven't had a newsletter in well over a year. So that is one of our big goals for the next year.
Excellent.
So maybe when you're thinking about the budget for next year, you could think of us as far as mailings, or we're not quite sure how we want to distribute that at this point.
Okay, excellent. Does anybody else have any questions, comments, or concerns? I appreciate your time, and thank you for coming up to inform us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Our next presentation is from Bob Chikowski and Andy Pelletier, basically following up from their last presentation, in particular to deal with the discussion and questions that have arisen regarding toders, trash and recycling toders.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Pelletier is passing out some literature for you to look at as he gives his presentation. While he's doing that, the purpose of our asking to be on the agenda was twofold. It was to clarify some things that were brought up at a previous meeting in Counselors' Forum, which actually were wrong. Wrong is a good word. First of all, I'd just like to bring you up a date. Somebody came up here and said that we were allowing carcinogen to be put into our landfill, and this was a material called Cold Bottom Ash. Casella came to us in our regular meeting and asked us about this material, and they had a proposal for somebody that wanted to bring this into our landfill, either as stuff to dispose of or as cover material. We asked our questions, we were satisfied, we found out that it's used in other landfills, and we gave an approval for this pending approval by the DEP. Now, in terms of what's in cold bottom ash, it's carbon and it's silica, in an amorphous form or a crystalline form. The crystalline form is also known as quartz. It's also known as sand. So that's what's going in our landfill. And I have the MSDS, the Material Safety Data Sheet for this material, and I would like to quote from it, "Under cold bottom ash, no evidence was found that classified cold bottom ash as a human carcinogen." So just because somebody comes up here and says something doesn't mean that it's always true. I just wanted to clear that up. The other item was, that was brought up, was about the totes, the mysterious totes that showed up at the DPW facility up there, and they were called Bringing Back Smart Card, which was rejected by this council twice. It has nothing to do with the smart card. So we'd like to clarify that tonight, and Mr. Pelletier will give you the details on that, and what he just passed out to you was a memo he sent to the town manager concerning what our proposal is for the use of these toders. So I will turn it over to Mr. Pelletier. What do you want? Oh, that's your stuff.
Typical chair stealing my notes.
Good evening. What I passed out was a memo I sent to Mr. Pecos immediately following the meeting, where concerns were raised regarding the toders. Hopefully, what I am going to present tonight will be a brief recap, although a lot less eloquent than that letter is, because I'm going to stumble all over myself. One of the first things I did when I came in as Public Health was reviewed the budget, and there was a strange line item that was a capital outlay item that said "toters." That was the only description in this outlay item. So spoke with Karen, spoke with then Christopher Rath at the time, called Jim Morin, who had left, and the line item was funded through Casella, a line item to improve recycling in town, and the intent of it was to purchase toders to improve containment of trash and hopefully by identifying containment of trash, improve recycling in the town. Since then, I've met a lot of the folks here, I've met a lot of folks in the town, and one of the biggest complaints that comes up is the condition of the streets on trash day. The... day, the stagnant recycling in town, just a lot about trash. Coincidentally, a set of goals was proposed to this council for acceptance, and one of the goals on that is to improve blight by reducing ugly. So to that end, the board asked me to work with them on a program to reach out to other towns, find out what's working, what's not working, with four sacred evils in mind, if you will. The four sacred evils are ugliness, we want it to stop; recycling, we want it to grow; disposal limits, it has been made clear to me and through me to the board that whatever we propose cannot put limits on disposal. People own this landfill, they have a right to use this landfill, and if they want to throw stuff away, they have the right to throw it away. So we approached it with not limiting disposal, but quite possibly limiting rubbish, and I believe our plan will actually give them adequate curbside rubbish. And the last thing, wasn't as critical to us, but I can't imagine that it wouldn't be critical to this board, was sustainability. Sustainability with no tax dollars. With that, the board members and I sat down to probably six months of meetings discussing options, you know, five minutes at every meeting, but we usually brought it up and discussed it at a meeting. Came up with a plan. Step one of the plan is actually going to end up being step two, is to develop regulation on trash, not just curbside trash, trash in general. What can you bring to my landfill? How do you have to put your trash at the curb? What are our expectations on the commercial people? I know if you collect trash in town, a la bef, a Casella, you are required by law to offer recycling. So how come the businesses out there who are ninety-eight percent paper or cardboard don't have a recycling dumpster? So our proposal is going to be an all-encompassing plan on trash. Part of the, part of what this affects on curbside is, and I know this wasn't the intent because I've talked to several members of the board, but you recently adopted or updated the bylaws, and the intent, in talking to you folks, this council, was to mandate curbside containment, no more loose bags at curbside. What was actually written was, "Clear plastic bags shall be used to store garbage or mixed rubbish and garbage only if used as a liner in watertight receptacles with tight-fitting covers as required." Provided, so this is the same thing as but or or, I mean but or otherwise, the clear plastic bags may be put out for collection. That line right there, this is straight out of the September fourth amendments, and I know the intent of this board was not to allow putting bags at curbside. So the board will include in their regulations their interpretation of this, which hopefully will respect, will reflect what this board proposed. Second step in our plan was to bring on a curbside monitor. This person's job will be, and actually, he started today. We're very happy to announce that we did hire a gentleman, very qualified, Anthony Rory. He will be a representative of the Board of Health. He will be our eyes and ears on the street. Mr. Rory will be, once he's trained, going through observing trash, any trash that is out of containers, he is actually going to rip it up in the back of a truck, and he is going to go through it, and if there's recycling stuff, he is going to approach whoever's name is on that and say, "Look, you could have recycled this, and therefore, this bag could have ended up in a trash receptacle rather than loose on our streets." He started today. We're looking forward to a long tenure with the gentleman. Third step in the plan, we want to introduce consistency. This is where Mr. Chakoski said, "This is not," and this is the only time in this unless you ask me a question specifically, "I'm going to use the smart cart word. This is not the smart cart program." Okay? We, on the last page of what I just handed out, there are pictures. Everybody here knows what Southbridge streets look like on trash day. If you look at that top picture, and Eric and I went up to Fitchburg and talked extensively with the director of public health in Fitchburg. He initiated this two-car program, a two-toter program. That picture on the top is a picture of Fitchburg. Now, everybody can say, "Oh, we're different." We aren't. We are Fitchburg's little sister. If it works in Fitchburg, it will work in Southbridge. I worked for five years in Fitchburg. I was very happy to come to Southbridge because it was like coming home. It was a town that has a lot of promise, has a lot of problems, knows it has problems, and is willing to work on its problems. I've worked in other pristine towns that say, "We don't have problems, don't find any." I'm so glad to be in a town that wants to fix its problems. Having said that, we have very similar dynamics to Fitchburg, and if it works in Fitchburg, I will repeat, it will work in Southbridge. The third, actually, let me show you what I'm talking about. Even without, I don't want to see the chat. Even without trashing these things, this is what we see on curbside right now. I want to find that, say, and trip there, and this is what we see on curbside. The first thing you should probably notice is there's no covers. That's because these are my private barrels. I actually took them from home. The covers are gone. I lost the covers. So first and foremost, if I lose my own covers, guarantee on curbside, they're going to get lost. This is what we're going to see on curbside. This is the cheapest way to do trash. This is a seventeen-dollar barrel. Sixty-four gallons of this is going to cost you thirty-five dollars. This is a thirty-two-gallon toter. Second thing you should notice about this trash can, it's got approximately a two-year shelf life. It's cheap. These are Home Depot prices, I'm giving you, by the way. This barrel right here, can't even find it anymore. I love this barrel. This barrel's been through hell and creation with me, but I love this barrel. I can't even find it anymore. This barrel right here is becoming the standard in the industry. It's a good doorbell barrel? Twenty-six dollars for this barrel. To replace sixty-four gallons, this is a thirty-two-gallon barrel, to replace sixty-four gallons, it's going to cost fifty-five dollars, and it's still going to lose its cover. This is what we see commonly at curbside right now. Once upon a time, a program was proposed. That program said, "You will use this cart," or a cart very similar to this. Everybody moaned and groaned. This cart is thirty-five gallons. This cart is not adequate in size. This cart limits the amount of trash we can throw out. So the program that went with this cart went out the window. It was voted out. Also, if anybody wants to check in later, kick it, you'll see it's a flimsy, poor-quality cart, and it's thirty-two. No, it's forty-six dollars, I believe, for this cart. What the Board of Health is proposing is a sixty-four-gallon tota. It's a very adorable, this is made by Tota Corporation. We looked at Cascade. We looked at about seven different tota companies. This is the best that we could come up with. We spoke with some experts in the industry. These carts are fifty-four dollars for the town of Southbridge. Our proposal to the town is that we want to launch a voluntary program. We want to launch a program to get the, we're going to concentrate on the core of the town and try to get the core to voluntarily adopt this, so that we can observe how it works. If you look at the last page, the pictures, the bottom picture, look familiar? I happened to be coming into work one day, I think it was in February, and I looked in my rearview mirror and I said, "Holy cow, does that look nice?" Just by, and that was before the trash trucks came. Those barrels have trash in them. Just by coincidence, that is Lower Main Street, and just by coincidence, that day, everybody had their barrels neatly at curbside, and they were very similar barrels. That's what we can have Southbridge looking if we can adopt such a program. Our intent is to roll the program out voluntarily, let it ride for a year or so, so we can try to launch it as effectively as we can in the core and other sections of the town, and thereafter, possibly expand it to a town-wide program. Now, some landlords out there, we've been talking to, they've already purchased sixty-four-gallon toters. We're fine with that. If you want to purchase a seventy-four-dollar one at Home Depot, we are offering free on the first round, and thereafter, we are going to ask this board to, through Karen Harnice, we're going to ask this board to adopt a revolving fund, so that when we have to replace one, this particular number, or number three, four, will be assigned to Denise, and this will be yours, and when you come back and say, "I destroyed it," then we will say, "We will gladly give you another one, but we're going to ask for a deposit of fifty-four dollars," the cost to the town. And if you move, you can bring that back to us, and we'll give you back your fifty-four dollars. The reason for that is we think the problem with the missing carts, because we are going through a ridiculous amount of recycled carts right now, and I don't want that to happen with these. I believe a lot of the occupants, when they move on, take the carts with them. I don't know, they put their linens or something in there and use them to move. A lot of times, we find waste oil in the thing, half-full. So we will be responsible for supplying the first one. Any thereafter, we will ask for a deposit, and that way, they will be more respectful and bring them back when they're done with them. This would eliminate any burden on the town or on the tax dollar for maintaining the program. We will continue to purchase the containers through the Casella grant, the recycle monies. And I think I just talked myself into a corner. I'm good.
Councilman Mannes?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I have two things for Mr. Pelletier. You mentioned clear bags, and I think I discussed this with you. We changed our bylaws. It no longer states clear bags, and I do not know why this isn't on website yet. It should be, "Plastic bags shall be used to store garbage or mixed rubbish and garbage in receptacles with tight-fitting covers." That's the new wording. "Plastic bags may be put out for collection, except in those cases where the Board of Health determines that such a practice constitutes a health problem." This was voted on three times? It passed? It's a new, it's new wording in our bylaw, so I don't understand why you're putting clear plastic bags in there. This should, it really is not on our website. It has not been updated on our website. I think somebody really needs to go through this with a fine-tooth comb and make sure everything's accurate on our website.
I will mention that to town clerk, because this, I printed an hour before this meeting.
I understand that, and I believe I spoke with you last week in regards to this too, and we talked about this, and, you know, I believe I brought it to the secretary's attention, who did bring it to the town clerk's attention a few times, and it still has not been on the website. If there's anything you can do, Mr. Manager, we'd appreciate that.
As you just read, though, the wording still is in there that they can put bags out at curbside, and we need to clarify that? I know that wasn't your intent through a lot of conversations with you, and the board is prepared to adopt regs to clarify that and make the Board of Health regs more exact to what your intent was. We don't want that to slip away when I do.
Okay.
I'm not planning to.
And then, I guess my second thing is, you know, we want to abide by the contract and everything, but what's going to happen when the new organic rules take play for the citizens, the regular households? Now, we're going to be, the state's going to be restricting the garbage going into our garbage cans. How's that going to affect everything? How's that going to affect our contract with Casella? How is that going to affect things?
At the moment, the proposal to remove organics from the waste stream is only a restriction put on those establishments that produce more than a ton of organics a week.
I understand that.
The huge grocery stores. To my awareness, I haven't even opened talks on bringing it down to the residential level. Once they do, we're going to have to see what DEP is proposing, and thereby talk to Casella about how we can fit that into the existing contract, or into whatever contract exists at the time.
Right, and I did discuss this with Casella at a meeting, and they did say they were going to have composting, but it's going to affect the contract, and so I just wanted to see how that was going to be dealt with, if anybody's thought about that.
I think we're in a good time right now. Casella, everybody knows Casella's going to be looking for further site assignment adjustment. They're going to be entering into MIPA, MIPA investigation, and I can't imagine all of that won't result in at least some sort of negotiations with Casella. So if that is closer to fruition at that time, then we'll have to deal with it in the new contract. It's really good timing for Southbridge that these things are happening when this might be happening.
Okay, thank you, and that's all.
Councilwoman Clements?
Thank you. To Councilman Mannes' point, because I pulled out the amended bylaws that the bylaw committee worked on for quite some time, and so it would be my suggestion to find out the meeting that we voted on the changes, to make sure they confer with the proposed that we had. It's my understanding, as you said too, that many people were opposed to the clear, and they took out the word "clear" and as it reads there. But I would still encourage us to actually look at, because we would have a copy with that information. We are required by law to keep any documents that we vote on together as part of our record, so somewhere along the line in a box somewhere is that meeting, and therefore, the documents that would have gone along to the recording clerk for that meeting. So if we want to make sure that what we voted on was accurate to your standards, or what was proposed and, to my understanding, was voted on, I would just ask that we, you know, just make sure that it's, they combine. In that statement also, there's a number of spots that talk about the tight fitting. Doesn't say watertight anymore, it was tight-fitting lid. Because we got rid of the watertight scenario, because that was almost impossible. Yeah, there's a few others, but this is the whole proposal that came in from the bylaw committee. So again, I think if you can just pull out the meeting in which we actually voted on this information, then it will have the most accurate wording. So we're all on the same page.
All right, even, I mean, boards of health have the authority to adopt regulations under chapter 111, section 31, but I can't imagine that I wouldn't at least discuss with my board, bringing it to the subcommittee and to this committee for their input on it, before the board actually adopts those regulations. So it does give this board a second opportunity to make sure that their intent is included in the letter of the law.
Right, great, that's fine, because it does mention in multiple spots, "stored in receptacles with tight-fitting covers." Bags stored in receptacles with tight-fitting covers. It's in two different sections, so it certainly was the intent that it's in a tight-fitting. So it would make no sense to take them out a week later, if we all want to reach into our containers and take out a not-so-nice bag, especially in the summer, and put it out there.
Absolutely, no question.
So the intent was to keep it in some type of tight-fitted, covered container.
Absolutely, no question in my mind what the intent of your actions were, but one day, I'm going to write a ticket out there, and they're going to pull that out and say, "That's not what it says." So I just want to make sure that we have something on paper that says, "This is what it says."
And that's important, because I'm off for enforcement, certainly.
I want to protect this board's intent.
So you, I just want to make sure I'm clear too. In terms of where you're rolling out this program, is it only in the core? Is it multifamily dwellings?
No, it is not. I would encourage-
Is it only multifamily dwellings?
No. We are, right now, anybody who needs a new cart, wants one of these, puts a request into the Board of Health. The one thing we are going to do is request that whoever takes one of these carts agrees to encourage all trash must fit in this cart. Recycling will be in the blue one, but all trash will be in this, there won't be additional carts, because we're looking for that nice, neat, aesthetic look in front of the houses. If people are throwing a ridiculous party and there's more rubbish than will fit in the cart, we have the transfer station program now. So that can, it can be brought up to the transfer station every Saturday. So there is no limit on the amount of trash people can throw away. We are looking for, we're looking to fight the blight. We are looking to support the goals that this board is about to adopt and make the streets look good.
Except one more follow-up then. But if somebody has one of these and has a party, but has a tight-fitted, covered container, they can put their excess trash in that and have more than one container at curbside?
I would say they can.
But you're not restricting trash pickup, you just said that.
Part of what I'm attempting to do also is to get this system as automated as possible, because there has been a lot of requests to get Casella down to less days per week, and unless we can improve efficiency at the curbside, we're not going to do that. I have spoken to Casella. They have said there is a potential to bring it down one day. So essentially, we would have trash Monday through Friday, when Monday is, I mean, Monday through Thursday, when Monday we don't have trash, I mean, when Monday we have a holiday and we have to advance it, we would have Tuesday through Friday, or a snowstorm, we would advance it one day. The only time we should ever see a truck on our streets would be if there's a snowstorm on Saturday. I mean, if there's a snowstorm on Friday, the only time we should see a truck on the weekend would be. I'm not promising that. I'm saying that Casella has put forth a potential for that, if we can streamline their curbside. It would be nice to get the trucks off the street on the weekends.
Right, okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Thanks. To follow up on that, actually, one thing I was wondering about, that made me think of, if they're going to be doing that, that seems like it primarily, other than aesthetics, benefits Casella. Can we make sure that, let me backtrack, where do you see things going at this point toward getting weekly recycling? Where do you see things going at this point toward getting weekly recycling? Because a lot of us have a bunch more recycling than we have trash.
Weekly recycling would incur insane amounts of money. Essentially, what you would have to do is, that truck, which runs our town and then runs Holden on an opposite week, or some other town on an opposite week, we're adding another half-million-dollar truck, and we are adding another full-time person to run two trucks through our town essentially every day. I can't, I can't even comprehend that Casella would open that up in a contract. That would be a ridiculous financial burden on them. Not what you wanted to hear, I know, but I'm being a realist. Lot of money on their pot. Right now, our contract, our trash contract is probably worth, right, about a million dollars. I based that on a previous town I've worked for with approximately the same number of pickups. If you add a full-third, you have now increased your million to 1.3 million. That's a lot of increase.
Counselor Manin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. To Mr. Pelletier, does the Board of Health or Casella, do they still offer an extra toter for those who have an enormous amount of recycling every other week? Because I know at one time they were offering people that needed that extra tote to do their recycling with. They would give that to them.
We have been giving out the little square toters for additional recycling. We are out of little square toters right now. So, I am currently talking with Casella on how we can supply adequate recycling so that there's enough capacity for two weeks.
So, if, like, say cardboard was bundled or something instead-
Excuse me, I missed that.
If cardboard, like, if they had an extreme amount of cardboard, if somebody did, and it was bundled and set up beside the recycling toter, that would be permissible?
I would be very upset if Casella didn't pick that up. I would send them back for that. If it was properly bundled outside the toter, but obviously recycling, I would take that up with Casella if they didn't pick it up. I've never really talked to them about that particular situation, but I can't imagine that a guy picking up recycling would kick the boxes to the side and walk away. I know I just opened my mouth, because it's probably happened.
Some people may think that if it's not in the toter, then they're not going to pick it up. So, they don't put it in the toter, and they don't think about bundling it up. So, that was my question.
I think as long as the toter is out there and this thing is in reasonable proximity to the toter, I think I would take offense to Casella not picking that up.
Thank you. Thank you.
Counselor Van?
Did I hear you say that the citizens were going to have to pay $54 for one of them?
No, you did not.
I did not.
The town will supply one of these to every residence. What's going to happen is, I am going to have you sign a piece of paper that says you received it, and you received number K-04140, whatever this is. When, six months later, you come to me and say, "Yeah, Andy, mine's full of oil," or "I lost mine," or "It's been crashed," I am going to say, "Town will supply you the second one." We will give it to you at, for a deposit, so that when you give it back to us when you're done with it, when you move to Charlton or to Webster or wherever you move, you give it back to us, we will reimburse you your $54. It will be a holding fee on our part. If you choose not to do that and you go to Home Depot to replace this, this is a $75 toter at Home Depot. We are offering it at more than you can get that capacity. Even if you buy the wonderful, beautiful containers I have here, buying two of them to equal the 64-gallon capacity that this offers will be more than our $54. And our $54 is refundable to you upon return.
Where are we at? At what point are we at right now to have Casella pick up trash once a week?
Trash once a week? They already pick up trash once a week.
We were, somebody was talking about it, that they, we wanted them, the councilors, we wanted them to pick up trash once a week. Get in here one day a week, pick up all the trash, and then move out. Because the trash trucks are here every day of the week.
I spoke extensively to Casella about this. And the hardship on that is, you will not have any company do that for you, because essentially what you're doing is hiring CDL drivers who went through, my nephew just went through it, it was $10,000 for his Class B to get a Class B CDL license. So, he shucked out $10,000.
Right.
If you shucked out $10,000 for your Class B license and Casella said, "We want to hire you for one day a week," you would go to Pratt and say, "Hire me for five days a week." The problem isn't that they can't do it. Actually, that's part of the problem, is that the money would be ridiculous. The problem is, they will be turning over drivers so fast that our street sites will be a nightmare. They, there is no reputable CDL driver that's going to sign on for one day a week. So, if we try to get Southbridge a one-day-a-week situation, they're not going to be able to maintain quality employees. They're just, they'll be all part-time people, not getting benefits, not getting, it just will be a ridiculous hardship on the drivers. They won't be able to maintain good drivers. So, the quality at curbside will go down. They did, I have been talking to them, and I am not promising this, and I don't want everybody running out on the street saying, "We're going to get four-day trash." We have been talking to them about it. It might take a slightly longer day, but if we can help automate it, help streamline it, they may get down to four days a week. And again, that'll keep the trucks off the streets on the weekends.
Thank you, Mr. Pelletier. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any others?
Just the questions, I have never, ever not had my cardboard, my bundled cardboard, and at times it has been extraordinary, it seems, picked up. They've always done that. Not only have they done that, they've also taken a separate container that I put a piece of duct tape on and wrote recyclables. They've emptied that when need be. But, to your point, Mr. Steves, I don't know if you've ever done it, but we do it, especially around the holiday time when you have too much recycling. We get in and we jump on ours, and it's amazing, you get another half a tank out of that, you know? So, it's a little tricky, kind of fun, but I would encourage you to, yeah, to squish your trash. But we've never not been picked up. We either bundled it to the side, or even put it, you know, under the cover, or whatever we've had to do. But we've had huge amounts of cardboard at times, and they've taken it all. So, not a problem there.
Just went to my mother-in-law's house, just aside note.
Jumped on a recycling?
No, I was picking up leaves, and the barrel was full, and I knew I could fit more. So, I jumped in the barrel, one foot slid down the inside of one side, one foot slid down the other, and I just tipped over on my face, so.
No, no, you need to hold on. There's a method. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none?
One other thing. I think Mr. Pelletier passed out bags, tote bags with insulated cups in them that encourage recycling. We gave them to the last council. We'd really like to see at your meetings, those cups for your drinks sitting up there as a reminder to recycle. The tote bags are great if you go to the grocery store, you don't need plastic bags, so they save there. So, that's a good thing. And as an economic incentive, if you take that cup to Dunkin' Donuts and have them fill it instead of putting in their Styrofoam, you get a discount. So, next meeting. Now, I intended to give you the quiz from last meeting, but we ran over on time, so we'll hold that off. And to the person that greeted me at the door and looked at me and said, "Oh, you must be here for the council on aging." No, I qualify, but that's not why I'm here. But thank you for your time tonight.
There is always a question from Mr. Moriarty when the council do to help us. So, I'll take it out of your hands right now, and I'll answer that. I would love to see the councilors all call and ask for one of these totes, just to say, "Hey, we're going to support this program, we're going to move this program along." I think it's a good program. I think it's a real good compromise between the hated, blue-cot program and just unlimited trash on our streets. And if this council would just, every one of them, give us a call, fill out the form, say, "Yeah, I will do everything in my power to get my trash into that thing," and then show the town that you're putting it out at your curbside. I've already had it out with one of my board members. No. So, my board is all going to have it. I'm going to try to pass it through the other boards. I think the leadership in the town, unless you're absolutely against the program, I would love to have the phone calls come in, and we'll get you these totes.
Counselor Manin?
I'll be calling tomorrow.
Very cool. Thank you.
Thank you. And just as a note, I want to agree, slightly off-topic, but as a graduate from Fitchburg State University, and having spent, obviously, a lot of time up there, I've always thought of Fitchburg as Southbridge on steroids, for better or worse, and couldn't agree with you more on a great deal of that. Everything else, really, too, but.
I'm going to put over my desk, little plug on, home sweet home.
Fantastic.
Thank you.
Moving on, our third and final presentation of the night. If we could, I'd like to ask Father Peter Preble, as well as Spiro Tomo, to join me
So, it was a week ago yesterday that Father Preble had invited me to attend the first time I've been to an Orthodox Mass, but a anniversary mass, 90th anniversary mass for St. Michael's Romanian Orthodox Church here in Southbridge up on Romanian Avenue, which was well-attended from a great number of people of Romanian descent or so forth, but also just from around the area, not just Southbridge. And I was very surprised to learn just how few Romanian Orthodox churches there are, really, even in this remote area. And Southbridge being one of the very few that serves that demographic and that group. I wanted to also note that, obviously, for 90 years, this church has been here. It was done on November 9th. Trying to do the math real quick, 1924, that's why I teach history, not math. But I can tell you, November 9th, a lot of big events, including this one. And with that, with 90 years, this church has been a big piece of the community for really about half of this time that Southbridge has been a community. As we, many of us know very well, the bicentennial coming up in 2016. So, almost, literally, for almost half of that time, we have had St. Michael's here. And with that, while a number of different individuals sent or brought proclamations and gifts for the, for Mr., for, rather, Father Preble and for the church, and I thought it would be nice to be able to bring them here and let everybody else kind of see the work that they've done and the efforts they've put in. I know they do, I forget if it's monthly or biweekly, a big community meal that I know last year I was able to help out with serving, and just a great turnout and a lot of people involved, and a lot of people of note that are part of your parish that involved the different things. So, with that, as to not ramble on, as we tend to do, we have a proclamation here for St. Michael's Romanian Church for the 90th anniversary. And whereas St. Michael's Romanian Church has been established in the Southbridge community since 1924, St. Michael's, located on Romanian Avenue, has been a longstanding structure erected for the express purpose of worshiping God in the Romanian community. Now, therefore, the town of Southbridge recognizes and celebrates the 90th anniversary of St. Michael's Romanian Church on this 17th day of November in the year 2014, even though it's eight days beyond the actual date of that first cornerstone being laid. And we want to thank you and many more years. Thank you.
Just a word to say thank you from us and from the community for your support over the years. Thank you.
Thank you for the recognition. We appreciate it, and we appreciated the chairman's presence at our banquet. Thank you again.
And as a note for the church, but also for any other groups in town, with that bicentennial coming up rapidly, more than happy and eager and hopeful to see some sort of float or presence in that bicentennial parade in May of 2016. Southbridge200.org has all that detail. Thank you. Moving on to agenda item number eight, Citizens Forum. If we have any residents here in town that would like to come forward to speak on something that is not on tonight's agenda, now is your opportunity. Just come forward with your name and address, please.
Bear with me, this is my first time doing this. Randy Butler. I live on Eastern Road, born and raised here. First of all, I'd like to start off by congratulating Sergeant Shane Woodson and Officer Dinghy for the work they do, and hope, wish them luck on any type of job changes that they get. Well-deserved. But that doesn't mean I agree with the Police Department 100% of the time, and that's why I'm here tonight. I'm here about this dog. And there's a process this town goes through. I took this dog in. I found this dog roaming the streets of Southbridge, dragging a blue collar and a leash. I took him in for four days. You can go by my Facebook and see a lot of pictures on my Facebook, because I took to this dog very well, and wanted to adopt it, if the original owner wasn't found. On September 29th, I made a decision that I regret today. I got a call from the Southbridge Police Station ACO, Animal Control Officer Kathy Shields, because I did the next right thing, because I'm an honest person. I found the dog, I took it to a vet, to make sure it didn't have a microchip. I took it to a vet also to make sure those are red cherries, he had, what they refer as to cherry eyes, and I didn't know what they were. I just wanted to make sure the dog was not uncomfortable or in pain. I also posted on my Facebook to try to find the owner, because that was my goal and my I took this dog on a phone call, because I was told by the town ACO, Kathy Shields, because I reported a dog to the police station, that they found the owner. I got there, and I found out this wasn't true. And how do I feel this way? Because there was nobody there to claim the dog. And I'm the only one that knew what it looked like. So, how is identification possible? It's not. I was also informed that I had to give the dog up due to laws and safety reasons. I looked it up. Now, there may be a law, I'm not a lawyer, and I'm not going to play one, because the TV's on. I don't have that big of an ego. But I will say, I found Mass Legislator 134, Sessions 1 through 7. Nowhere in that session did it say that I had to give that dog up. So, again, dishonesty. What I did find is that I always had to be responsible to try to find the owner and comply with any laws that this town may have. And I only had four days with the dog, and unfortunately, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, you're not going to get much done. So, I did that, but Monday I got a lot done. Unfortunately, because I thought the police station runs on good moral values and honesty, I gave the dog up, because I thought I was being told the truth. I also filed a complaint that same day, because I was told that I was not going to be able to pick this dog up if the owner wasn't claimed. So, I filed a complaint with the police station and the town hall. Very next day, I got a call from the police station from the police chief, Daniel Sherr. He gave me a name and a place that I could try to adopt this dog, because supposedly they cannot do adoptions. But again, I don't think this dog should have been taken from me in the first place. Her name was Joy. She works at Broken Tail Rescue at a Whister. I applied for an adoption for this dog, who I named Nova, six days before they even got him. Six days. And as I'm going through this process, I hear a lot of silence. And I don't know about everybody in here with kids, but if you got a kid at home, and they got a friend over, when do you check on them? When it's silent. So, I called, and I called. And again, a lot of dishonesty from a place that supposedly does goodwill and works off of donations and fundraisers. So, I called, and I called, and looked out, even called the veterinarians on their website, tried to find out where this dog was and what his welfare was. Lo and behold, I called up, and I finally got ahold of Joy. I was told that the dog needed 14 days of recovery. I was also told that this dog had other surgeries lined up. So, I gave it a couple of weeks. This was the 15th. I waited a couple of weeks, and then, lo and behold, I called at the end of the month to see where the dog is. And I found it on the website. It was adopted on the 19th of October by somebody else. Okay? And so, again, a lot of lies and a lot of deception, coming from its place of charity and goodwill. coming from its place of charity and goodwill. Now, they call themselves Broken Tail Rescue, and I'm here to tell you, that dog was no longer in danger, no longer needed to be rescued as soon as I gave it home. It was not in danger of being attacked by a wildlife. It was not in danger of being culled, underfed, or loved for. I'm the one that truly rescued that dog. I feel I should have had first choice of them. And these laws that say, I don't know what laws say that I could not have a dog, but I was not given a valid reason to my liking. Not saying it, but you know, I was told I was inexperienced with pets. I haven't had a pet.
Mr. Butler, just a moment. You've hit the five-minute mark, so if you want, we can, if the council so wishes, we can extend another two minutes.
All right, if you want to extend two more minutes, I'll put down in two minutes.
All those in favor? Okay, thank you.
All right, the only valid reason, I was not given any valid reasons to my liking, except I was inexperienced with pets. So I guess with all the dogs that are on rescue places, a person that has their own first pet can't get one. I think not. I was also, also that I was in there trying to get this dog through deception and dishonest people. I found it very hard to find out that she adopted it to a friend. That's why the radio silence is going on. I never had a chance to get that dog back, because the soul, somebody that was watching that dog at the time had a friend that was also interested in him. Which leads me a lot of different questions, why this happened. Is this dog a certain breed that's worth money? I don't know. Who was actually the friend or the foster mother? Is it Kathy Shields herself, or is it Joy? Who is the friend? I don't know nothing, because I dealt with dishonesty from the very beginning. And to say that I'm an Army veteran that served this country, so this process happens, and I'm not responsible, to say I got a good work history, to say I'm not responsible, to say that I look after a 13-year-old kid that's not mine, like he's my own son, to say I'm not responsible, to say that I'm a member of this church right next door and say I'm not responsible, then I think a lot of people can't adopt a pet. And thank you for your time and consideration.
Excuse me, wait a minute. Just wait a minute. Can you guys stay there back a little bit? Can you just get back up there for a second? True to Chairman to the Town Manager, everybody knows that I like pets better than I like people. And I think this young man needs an explanation. So I'd like you, I'd like you to get to the bottom of this. And I don't think this is a minor matter either. I think this is an important matter. And I'd like to know if any people that we have working for the police station or the animal control broke any laws. And I would like us to be nice to this young gentleman here, because I feel bad that he didn't get the dog. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is this something that the manager can hold on to, Mr. Butler?
I believe I already sent one there. Whether it was relayed to him, I don't know.
I did not receive it.
I did drop one off at your office already.
Did you come into my office?
But I do have it on a flash drive, so if anybody wants a copy, I'm more than welcome to it. I can make more.
Did you come into my office, sir?
Yes, but unfortunately, it was on Election Day. So I don't blame you for that, no problem.
Rest assured, per the council's request, we'll look into this, and I'll be back to you personally.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, excuse me. Did you come up here to this office or downstairs on Election Day?
I came up here, because I went downstairs first and then directly here.
And they sent you up to here. Okay.
Very good. Thank you for clarifying that.
What is your full name, please?
Randy H. Butler.
Who?
Randy H. H. is my middle initial.
Okay, okay. Thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Do we have any other residents who'd like to come forward?
I want to clear something up about coal fly ash. I triple-checked this in the back. Fortunately, I have a little browser. Anyone out there at home, please do a search. Carcinogenic-
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. He didn't introduce himself.
Pardon?
Your name and address.
My name is John Pulaski, 3 Genesee Street. Thank you. The American Coal Ash Association confirms that coal fly ash is carcinogenic. What percentage of it, someone's up there talking about percentages, 100% of it is carcinogenic. Now, I heard some, I'm hard of hearing, I lost about 20% of my hearing while serving on a submarine from all the motors running all the time. Learned a lot about radioactivity, but some I learned in the back of the room. I don't know if the Chairman of our Board of Health considers Scientific American a reliable source or not, but it suggests, and I just learned this tonight, coal ash is more radioactive than radioactive waste. This is Scientific American, December 13th, 2007. Now, our Environmental Protection Agency says that all landfill liners leak. Now, some of us that plan on dying in the next 10 or 20 years may not care about this, but if you have any respect for the young people and your families, young people you aren't related to, this is going to be a serious problem. Now, how, I had heard the percentages. Unfortunately, I couldn't hear everything the gentleman said. But 5,000 parts per billion, which is the same as five parts per million, which is less than 1,000th of 1%, is dangerous enough of a level of carcinogenic chromium to be concerned about. But fly ash has more than chromium. Fly ash has arsenic. Look it up online. A lot of, I mean, I know a lot of people in this town are not, don't have access to computers. But to come up here and to suggest, I was told, someone on Facebook claimed I was trying to work people up. I'm not trying to scare people. I'm trying to prevent a serious risk from coming into this community. We already have problems with toxics getting into the water. I had a former town councillor tell me years ago not to worry about it, because the water's flowing to Sturridge and the wind is flowing to Charlton. So it's like, give me a break. I mean, we should care. When I left this town 30 years ago, I was living in a tri-community, and we cared about everybody. We would have cared if we were toxifying people in the northeast corners of Maine or the southwest corners of California, northwest corners of Washington. This is a problem. It's going to prevent people from being able, or reduce the chances of that landfill being mined in the future, and it's going to increase the cost. People are going to have to dress like spacemen to clean that place up. It's dirty. We shouldn't bring it in our community. And the fact that we're getting $5 a ton for that poison is borderline insane. I don't get it. I don't get how a Board of Health could approve such a thing. Yes, sand might be carcinogenic too, but if you put the two of them next to each other, I would think one is probably as much as 1,000 times more cancerous. We got a lot of people in this town that do things about cancer, and cancer treatment is important. But dollar for dollar, the best way to fight cancer is to prevent cancer. We don't need that here. When we allow people to dump that garbage at $5 a ton, we're encouraging the coal industry to poison the American people.
Fun site, what's your point of order, please?
Mr. Pulaski is disruptive. He's out of line. He's out of line. I'd like you to rule on that, please.
I apologize for being upset that my Board of Health is not willing to protect the people of Southbridge. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for your service to the town.
Thank you. Do we have any other residents or citizens who'd like to come forward for citizens' forum? One more call. Seeing none, moving forward.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. I would like to, I would like to ask if we could add an agenda item this evening. It's in regard to the landfill reimbursement fund receipt agenda item that we had on last Monday's meeting, that we had a meeting on this evening in order to discuss this contract that's already been awarded. And the intent was that it should be on tonight's agenda, and I noticed it was not on tonight's agenda. And it was clearly outlined last week that we would postpone any movement on it until we had had a meeting, discussed the contract, and made sure that everybody was well informed. So I am asking, I'm making a motion that we add the agenda item to vote to recommend to appropriate $27,000 from the landfill reimbursement fund receipts reserved account number 6785 to the landfill comparability study account to fund the contract with Clough Harbor and Associates, LLP, CHA, this evening.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion to add to the agenda? Councilor Vecchia?
Yes, what item is it going to be? Is it going to be number 16?
Whatever the Chair would like it to be.
Or is it going to be the next agenda item? What are you going to make?
I would think that it would probably be best to just get it out of the way, if that's the intent, and make that agenda item 8A at the moment. Any other question, comments, or discussion on the motion to add this to the agenda? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilor Clemens?
Yes.
Councilor Strata?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Marjorie?
Yes.
Councilor Paliquin?
Yes.
Councilor Steves?
Yeah.
Councilor Vandal?
Yes.
Councilor Vecchia?
Yes.
Councilor Crossco?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Motion carries. So the motion, if Councilor Covitz could read that again, as to the actual agenda item, which would now be 8A.
The agenda item would be vote to, vote to appropriate $27,000 from the landfill reimbursement fund receipts reserved account number 6785 to the landfill comparability study account to fund the contract with Clough Harbor and Associates, LLP, parentheses, CHA, and submit, that's it, sorry. Submit to council is the other, but that's it.
So do we have a motion?
Second.
Well, that's my motion, sorry. That's my motion.
Okay. So that's been made in form, motion, and Councilor Manna has seconded. Any questions, comments? Councilor Vecia?
If I remember right, true to Chairman to the Town Manager, if anybody who can answer this, or Councilor Clemens, Casella is going to pay this $27,000? That's my first question.
That's correct.
And my second question is, when are we going to get the money from Casella?
Money for the one-off sum?
When would you get it from Casella, the money?
Karen Harno, is he here?
She was.
She was here.
She is, yeah.
Karen, is the money in house now, or no? So I would expect we'll receive it as soon as the council votes.
I just have a question, Karen. When do you think we'd get that money?
As soon as we bill it. I think Mr. Paliquin gave us the indication that they would pay it. We, just to clarify, we do have money in the landfill reimbursement fund.
I understand that.
Yeah, okay.
But I'm just saying that Casella said that they would put up to 27,000. So I'm just wondering when Casella is going to give us the money.
I've been speaking with Mr. Faris regarding this. Told him that the study was held up until we could get the money. He said he was going to apply up to the powers that be. So as quick as Casella management can work, is, should be as quick as we should get the money.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Also?
Yes.
Any other questions, comments on the agenda item? Mr. Pulaski?
Mr. Chairman, as I mentioned at the last meeting, I don't know if this has been resolved yet, but this was to be done every seven years. Was it supposed to be done from the time the contract was signed, the time that the Board of Health approved the site assignment, or from the time the DEP allowed the changes to occur at the landfill? Because I'm not surprised that the landfill operator is willing to pay $27,000, because by doing it this year instead of next year, the town, they will save over $400,000 a year because of the expected increases due to over half of the landfill capacity of the state ending at the end of next year. So if this study is done at seven years from the time, and I don't think it's, has it been seven years since? It's been seven years since, so this is from the time that the contract was signed, not from the time that they started, because I know we didn't start getting the money that was promised till three or four years after the contract was signed.
Yes.
The Manager?
It's seven years from the date of the signing of the contract. It provides the opportunity to do it once every seven years. So seven years, 14 years, 21 years, et cetera, et cetera. And in terms of there being an impact on the status of the landfill next year, there is none, irrespective of the status of the landfill, the cost remains the same, whatever, whatever the bid is that comes in. So if this is delayed another year, there is no greater cost to Casella, there is no lesser cost to Casella. It remains the same. It has nothing to do with the permitting of the landfill. It's strictly for a comparability study to determine if the money they give us is comparable to other municipally-owned, sponsored landfills. It has nothing whatsoever to do with the permitting process of the landfill.
Oh, I realize it has nothing to do with the permitting process of the landfill. What I'm saying is, and you can confirm this by calling the other landfills, private and municipally-owned, and we're kind of in the gray area, they are all expecting significant increases in a year, because over half of the state's capacity is decreasing. So what I'm saying is, this study in one year will possibly get us $400,000 to $800,000 a year more because of the increases, because this is our opportunity to get what we're entitled to. Now, this company, this company has claimed, for example, that the increases we're supposed to be getting for increasing our recycling is not available from the DEP. Now, the former source is no longer, the former way the DEP determined this is no longer available. But at the Mass Municipal Association, the DEP was giving each town's recycling rate. Yet, we have yet to get that increase. So we're dealing with a company that has sometimes not been, that has sometimes been reluctant to pay us what was originally promised. For example, they told us they would never increase the footprint of the landfill seven years ago, yet one of their representatives up here claimed it was always a plan, and that we agreed to the second phase. Anyone could look at the entire process back then and see that there was a firm promise that they would never expand. So the, as people and faces change, the story has changed. And it's almost unbelievable to think that with half of the state's capacity going away, that the increase would not be greater in one year or two years than it is now. And I don't know if you have a lawyer's opinion that it starts from the seven years. There's a presumption, like we were told from this podium seven years ago, that the councils were told, that if they sign that contract, we would start getting over $3 million a year the next year. I don't know if we're getting that even yet. So there's a lot of promises that are made that aren't kept. And if we lock in to the lower price, it's going to cost, for them to give us 27,000, it may cost us 20, it may cost the town an additional $27,000 a quarter. So if there's any legal way of approving or to delaying this study a year to the time when half the landfill capacity of the state is gone, this town can make more money. And that's my concern. Since it didn't, the clock doesn't, didn't start until three or four years after, I don't see why on this particular feature of the contract, we have to do it seven years, since so many other promises were ignored.
Mr. Manager?
You're suggesting, sir, that tipping fees are going to precipitously rise next year for some unknown reason. I believe you're citing-
No, for an unknown reason, because the capacity's cut down.
If I may finish, I believe you're citing, you are alleging that 50% of the total landfill capacity will suddenly, next year, all of a sudden, all at once, cease to exist.
According to the DEP, more than half of that-
If I may continue.
Yes, sir.
It is not the nature of landfills that they suddenly become 50% filled in one year. It is the nature of landfills that they become filled each year a little bit more over time until they are finally filled. By delaying this study, and it's already been delayed a year, we are potentially giving up revenue that we might discover other communities are receiving. We will not know that unless we conduct this study and find out comparably what other communities are receiving. It is the case that the cost of landfill disposal tipping fees- It is the case that the cost of landfill disposal tipping fees will go up over time. It is indisputably the case, which is why the contract provides that once every seven years, approximately with that frequency, we will do another comparability study. If you do a comparability study this year, you will learn whatever it is we will learn. If you do it next year, we will learn whatever it is we will learn. If you delay it the year after, you will learn whatever it is it will learn. But by delaying it, we only run the risk of giving up money potentially. We don't increase our revenue in any way, because this sudden increase in tipping fees that you predict is simply not in evidence whatsoever.
Sir, it's not my prediction, and I must have been inarticulate. Eight out of the 15 landfills are closing at the end of 2015. Eight out of the 15. That's not the, well, the landfills are filling up, and that's just numbers, that's not more than, if you look at actual capacity, the state is actually losing more than half of the capacity. So with half the landfills going, check it out on the DEP site, I don't, I don't get it. Well, this is the only thing that is in stone. Everything else is okay. No, we didn't get the 3 million, no, it's, but this, now, we've got to do this on the seven years. The more time we buy, the more time, more money we'll make, because those tipping fees are going up. And this study, you can call, you can yourself spend an hour and call these places, like I did over the past week. They're all, it's going up, it's going up. Call stockbrokers in New York, buy Casella shares, because the rates are going up, they're going to make more money. And I've got nothing against them making an honest dollar.
Mr. Pulaski?
Mr. Pulaski, you came up here with one question in regards to, if we did our homework in regards to if.
You have legal opinion, yeah.
Well, your question was, if I recall correctly, was if this was done within the timeframe. May 29, 2007, was the date that this contract was signed. We are in 2014, so that's seven years, okay? If, page 35 of this contract says that the town shall have the right, but not the obligation, to perform a landfill benefit competitive market study on the seventh anniversary, okay? That is 30 dash 2.
Seventh anniversary of what, sir?
Of the, of the signing?
Contract.
Of the effective date of the contract, which was.
Oh, well, that wasn't then. That was the next year.
May 29, 2007.
That was not, the effective date was changed.
Again, that is something that you're going to need legal opinion about, but what we have here is May 2000, May 29, 2007. Now, hear me, I understand this, your concern. I am not a Casella defendant, I am representing the town. This is one of the things that, why I'm voting for this, and I will give you my explanation now. Part B, in page 36, it says, "The parties shall equally share the cost and expenses such a cured in the independent consulting of the landfill benefit competitive market study." Okay? This is what the contract says back from 2007.
Well, thank you.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, with all due respect, okay? This is the reason I'm voting for this, because the original contract states that both the town and Casella had to split the cost. At this point, it's not going to hurt us, and it's not going to, it's actually a benefit for us, because we're not, we're not dishing out no money.
No, it isn't. Mr. Vice Chairman, check with your own town attorney, he himself provided an alternative effective date of that contract. It was done in the side letter. So if you don't have that side letter next to you, you, you know, and check with respected council, Mr.?
Caprera?
Caprera.
All right. Mr. Pulaski, just briefly, we have several other speakers that, so I first have Councilor Steves, then the manager, okay? Mr. Manager?
Again, sir, you're suggesting that tipping fees are going to suddenly and precipitously rise next year. If it were the case that that were true, and I won't even dispute that 8%, I'm sorry, 50% of the landfill capacity is suddenly going away, that's not true, but let's, let's say you're right. If that were true, tipping fees would go up right now. Tipping fees go up in anticipation of the markets, just like oil prices do, just like gas prices do, just like all commodities do. Tipping fees are set every day. We get a record of Casella's tipping fees. They go up and down all year long, they change every day. If it was the case that those tipping fees were suddenly going to go up next year, and we should therefore wait, what you're suggesting is everyone else's tipping fee is going to go up, but ours isn't. The tipping fee here will go up too. It's, let me finish.
We'll still get the low rate.
The tipping fee is going to go up relative to the marketplace wherever haulers can find capacity in landfills. It is not going to be the case that Haverhill's fee will go up to $100, and ours will stay $50. Haverhill goes up to $100, ours will go up to $100. The purpose of this study is to determine who is getting what of the municipally-owned landfills in the state, and is the deal we're getting fair. And delaying that analysis and learning that truth or not is simply not, does not make any sense to wait. Every year we wait, we potentially deprive the residents of this community of additional revenue that we might be able to get.
Are you saying this week that it's only municipal landfills? Because last week you said it would be all landfills. There's only three municipally-owned landfills that will be open.
I didn't say anything different last week than I'm saying this week. It's municipally-owned landfills which are operated by a third party.
There's only three of those, too.
Okay. Mr. I have, are you outside, Mr. Manager? Councilor Vecchia?
I make a motion to move the question, please.
I wish you hadn't signed the agenda, I would have had a half dozen people.
Can you move the question, please? Second, I second that motion.
Okay, there's no discussion on moving the question, so roll call, please.
Councilor Strata?
Yes.
Councilor Manah?
Yes.
Councilor Marjorie?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilor Peliquin?
No.
Councilor Steves?
No.
Councilor Vandal?
No.
Councilor Vecchia?
Yes.
Councilor Krasco?
Yes.
Councilor Clemens?
Yes.
Motion carries?
Six yes, three no.
Thank you. So the motion on the table, if Councilor Clemens could read that one last time, just before we, just to read the motion before it's voted on.
All right, that's for, for moving it, I'm sorry.
Correct.
Thank you. I thought when you move it, you just, yeah, okay.
The motion again is vote to appropriate $27,000 from the landfill reimbursement fund receipts reserved account number 6785 to the landfill comparability study account to fund the contract with Clough Harbor and Associates, LLP, CHA, and, that's it.
Okay, so that's the most, the vote now will be on the motion itself. Roll call, please.
Councilor Manah?
Yes.
Councilor Marjorie?
Yes.
Councilor Peliquin?
Yes.
Councilor Steves?
Yes.
Councilor Vandal?
Yes.
Councilor Vecchia?
Yes.
Councilor Krasco?
Yes.
Councilor Clemens?
Yes.
Councilor Strata?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Thank you, motion carries. Agenda item number 10, vote to appoint Russ Gagnon of Southbridge to the Southbridge Ad hoc Bicentennial Committee, effective immediately through March 31, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilor Marjorie?
Yes.
Councilor Peliquin?
Yes.
Councilor Steves?
Yes.
Councilor Vandal?
Yes.
Councilor Vecchia?
Yes.
Councilor Krasco?
Yes.
Councilor Clemens?
Yes.
Councilor Strata?
Yes.
Councilor Manah?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Thank you, motion carries. Agenda item number 10, vote to appoint Diane Gagnon of Southbridge to the Southbridge Ad hoc Bicentennial Committee, effective immediately through March 31, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilor Peliquin?
Yes.
Councilor Steves?
Yes.
Councilor Vandal?
Yes.
Councilor Vecchia?
Yes.
Councilor Krasco?
Yes.
Councilor Clemens?
Yes.
Councilor Strata?
Yes.
Councilor Manah?
Yes.
Councilor Marjorie?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Thank you, motion carries. Agenda item number 11, vote to appoint Darlene Reno of Southbridge to the Southbridge Ad hoc Bicentennial Committee, effective immediately through March 31, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilor Steves?
Yes.
Councilor Vandal?
Yes.
Councilor Vecchia?
Yes.
Councilor Krasco?
Yes.
Councilor Clemens?
Yes.
Councilor Strata?
Yes.
Councilor Manah?
Yes.
Councilor Marjorie?
Yes.
Councilor Peliquin?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Thank you, motion carries. Agenda item number 12, vote to approve the addition of a new position to Schedule 1, Assistant Town Manager, MS-14, under the direction of the Finance Director Town Accountant.
Assistant Town Accountant, sir. He said Town Manager.
Did I, I'm sorry.
It's a wonderful idea, but it's not.
I'll start this all over again, especially if we could pay him at that range. Vote to approve the addition of a new position to Schedule 1, Assistant Town Accountant, MS-14, under the direction of the Finance Director Town Accountant, with a salary range of $49,088 to $58,722, according to the details listed in the job description attached.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Councilor Vecchia?
Thank you. I reviewed the budget of the Town Accountant's Office from 2014, FY 2014, and FY 2015. As I've been saying right along, I would like to see the budgets cut at least 1%. The budget in 2014, FY 2014, was $148,940. This year is $152,647. It's an increase of 2.5%. The Town Accountant, who's making $1,988 a week, and her assistant accounting clerk, who's making $823 a week, both got increases of 2%. So this is a new position, and no matter what department, I'm not going to vote for new positions, and also, it's too much money. Presently, the girl's making $42,000, the position pays $42,791, and it's going to be increased to a top range of $58,722. We can't afford this, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Strata?
Mr. Pecos, in other words, I brought a big problem, no representation, football league on the kid. I have the complaint here, and now, I send you email, everyone, the town council, I send the email in person, no, I have my complaint, because, no, there was money. Now, money for new, new position. My point is, is that was the approach incorrect, my point, thank you.
Okay. Councilor Manah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I wasn't able to make it to that General Government Subcommittee meeting, so I did send Mrs. Harnoy's an email, request some information, and I, in her email, she stated that the money was allocated through a state aid increase, and I believe she's at the podium now. If she could explain this?
Actually, what I'd like to do, if I could, Mr. Pecos, could I just ask you for a brief overview of this first?
Sure.
And then if there's any additional.
Sure. Ms. Manah? As many things that are before the council, this is really quite straightforward. The position is currently budgeted, and it already exists, we're just upgrading it one step. The cost at maximum step at grade would be 8,000. Now, that doesn't mean that we will hire somebody who will command that step, it just means that's the possibility. The problem that we're trying to solve is one of redundancy and an essential, succession plan. At the current time, we have no backup for the Town Accountant. Now, you were all at a school committee joint meeting a couple of weeks ago where they advised us that when Karen's on vacation, we cannot process the accounts payable warrant, because she is the only one who bears the title and can therefore sign the warrant, releasing the checks, releasing the warrant to the treasurer for the checks to be prepared and sent. Now, that is, I would say, somewhere between an inconvenience to a real hardship on the vendors, the businesses that we do business with, because depending when their bill hits our cycle, and depending whether we can process it in the normal two weeks, or three or four weeks, that can be a long time when small businesses don't get their money and we can't pay them. So what we're trying to do is we're trying to create an assistant Town Accountant position, person who will, by education and training, be relatively ready, and who will attend the school and become certified, Mass Accountants Association. And at that point, we will not have the problem any longer with waiting for payrolls, accounts payable rather, to be processed when Karen's on leave. And we will have a succession plan, such that where Karen to leave, the town's employee for any reason, we would have somebody ready with the title to step in immediately with no, no undue delay. In most cases that we have with major positions, fire chief, police chief, DPW director, Town Manager, we have redundancy, we have someone ready to step in. We have a deputy chief, deputy police chief, deputy fire chief, town engineers who serves as a deputy DPW director, and the CFO by charter serves as the deputy Town Manager in the manager's absence. So we have redundancy in all those positions, but the chief financial officer, which is the single most important financial position we have, we have no redundancy. So basically, what Karen and I are suggesting, that the council consider, is for the maximum cost of 8,000, and it may well be less, but for the maximum cost of $8,000 a year, you create that redundancy. If it's the council's will to not do that, then we will hire a replacement for the vacant position at the lower rate, but that person is unlikely to be, at this, at that pay scale, is unlikely to be a person that would be able to go to the school and get certified and be an accountant. So that's the whole point of this, it's pretty simple. And it actually wasn't really so much Karen and my idea as it came out of that school committee meeting, and the council seemed interested that night in curing that redundancy problem, so this is our response to it.
Mrs. Harnoy, so forth.
Okay, if I can just follow up after that. In the, in the budget right now, is it, is it a principal clerk at $42,791? There's also $2,500 for longevity benefits, which is a total of $45,291. And what I did is I averaged out, if we were to hire someone on the MS-14 range, mid-range, would be $53,670. So that's where about $8,400 it would cost for a full year. We would be asking for half a year for fiscal 15, which would be $4,200. And, let's see, so I just wanted to, to clarify that with the, with the money part of it.
Also? Councilor Vecchia?
To begin with, this salary range is $49,000 to $58,000, so when Town Manager states there's a maximum of $8,000, I don't know, I graduated from accounting school, these figures are not correct. Secondly, about the school department, Karen Harnoy's, how long have you been employed here?
Over 10 years.
So she, Mrs. Harnoy, she was doing a wonderful job, by the way. Has been here for 10 years, and the school committee's complaining, I don't really care about the school committee complaining, we've been doing this for 10 years this way. So I don't like this kind of excuse to get this passed because of, she isn't here. Again, I've been stating right along, I'd like to cut the budgets 1%, and all we're doing is increasing budgets, so that's all I got to say right now. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Just briefly, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just forgot to add a few things, Councilor Manah had asked, I just want to clarify that this is not an additional position in my office, this will replace the principal clerk, so we still will have two positions in the office. And when Councilor Manah was asking me about whether the taxpayers would have to pay for yet into the fiscal '15 budget. Now, back in May, there was an amount of money that we said that we would give some additional to the school if we got some state aid. So, we talked to the superintendent, and we agreed that we would basically split the additional $84,000, and so the town does have about $40,000 available for additional appropriations when we set the tax rate. So, I just wanted to clarify. That's what would be coming from, is additional state aid.
I have Councilor Kraska.
Through you, Mr. Chair, to Ms. Harnoy, if I can misunderstand this correctly. So, there's monies that are not used, and we would still be able to use it to help our taxpayers if we choose to. But you're saying that the plan, if I hear correctly, or correct me if I'm wrong, is to use part of that money to fund this position?
Yes, which would be approximately $8,400, or less if we hired at lower than mid-range.
Thank you.
In the interest of full disclosure, it is the case that if you did not appropriate this money for this purpose, you could appropriate... You could direct us. It's additional state aid, so you can't really appropriate it to reduce taxation, but you could tell us to increase estimated receipts, which could have that effect. So, the short answer is yes, you could do that if that was the council's choice.
Thank you. Councilor Vecia?
I'm very aware of state aid. When I was chairman of Education and Human Services in 2002, we got an additional $1.9 million in Chapter 70 money, state aid. Where we want to spend the $84,000 is up to the council, not the town manager or any department. It's up to the council to stake with that $84,000. Myself, I'm for the kids. I would give it all to the kids, but I'm only one vote, okay? But when you said we're going to take the money and we're going to give it to this position, that's for us to say, as far as I'm concerned, okay? And I think that money should go to the kids anyways, not for the position. Thank you.
Just quickly, compared to... These are two extremes, so feel free to improvise and come up with an in-between if need be, but is this more so a luxury, or is this a necessity? Through you two either, not through anybody but...
I would not call it a necessity, no. I would also not call it a luxury. I would call it a way to improve the town's financial structure by creating this redundancy, and I'll let the council members put whatever value judgment on that you'd like, but I most assuredly wouldn't call it a necessity, no. We've... As Councilor Vecia points out, we've been functioning under the current system for many, many years, and it works, but it has some attendant deficiencies. And if you want to correct them, this is a way to correct them. And if that's not the council's desire, then we won't correct them. We'll continue to operate as we have been.
And, Ms. Harnoy, if, in the past, with the current setup, how often is there any delay of significant note?
Basically, now it's pretty much up to date. There would just be a delay when I'm not there, and also when the clerk isn't there, because there isn't any backup for her as well. So, she has a lot of longevity, so she does have a lot of vacation. I have some, so there is, but we've been able to keep up with that. What the main concern with this is, is that each department, and we kind of discussed this a little, and it was after the subcommittee meeting, each department generally has a clerk, which is either an S5 or an S7, but they aren't... But their qualifications aren't necessarily geared towards that department. So, what I'm looking for is for someone who understands a little bit more of accounting, the procedures, the policies, somebody that can help me... Help assist me getting the work done more through. A lot of things get done to a certain clerical point, and then they kind of have to wait for me to pick it up at that point. So, if we had somebody who had some background in accounting, who's willing to get certified, who can provide this, I think that's really invaluable to the department. So, I would agree. It's not a necessity, but I feel that it's very valuable.
And just lastly for me anyways, how... Is this something that more communication and cooperation between the town and school sides would benefit for, or is this something that is really only going to benefit by this sort of a position change?
I'm sorry. Are you asking who would really benefit by this?
Is this something that is remedied best solely by a position change, or is it something that would be remedied at least partially more so by greater communication and cooperation between here and central office or the school side?
I think it's mostly through the position, the cooperation. We've been working very well together. We just need to... Right now, that there's an interim director of finance over at the school, so once we get that settled and there's someone permanently in there, then we can put more additional procedures in place, so it shouldn't be an issue about when things are coming over to us.
Okay. Any other questions? Council comments?
Thank you, Mrs. Harnoy, for being here. You were at the subcommittee meeting, and we had a lot of discussion in regard to numerous components to this. And one of them, I asked a couple of things. Obviously, at this point, there was an opportunity for this change to take place, because you've had this other clerk for many years. Had you considered this change in the past? You had a clerk who was not in this position. Now, you have that opportunity because... I look at this as an opportunity to change the efficiencies of what's being done in that office. So, the clerk has moved off, and you have an opening. Had you considered this, though, as something to change in the past? Or did this just come about because of this open... I mean, obviously, you're not going to fire someone just to change the position.
Right.
But is this something that you've thought about over a longer term, or just decided this year would be the year because you had the opening? I mean, I guess I'm looking at to see your background on this. How necessary, while it's not a necessity, how necessary do you feel it is to the well-being and the growth of the town in general, I guess, the operations of the town? You did run our town for a while as our town manager, so, you know, just some insight.
I have thought about this for a while, but obviously because of budget constraints, budget concerns, it isn't anything that I've brought forward before. What's happening now is that the principal clerk in my office has accepted a position in the Economic Development Office. So, at this point, even though I've always thought about this in the past, just because we would just gain so much efficiency from having somebody with an accounting background, this gave me the opportunity to bring it forward at this point. So, again, you know, the principal clerk position will not be filled. It would be an Assistant Town Accountant. So, if I could bring it forth, I looked at the numbers, called some other places, got, you know, was looking how many different towns had the assistance, what the salary ranges were, what would be reasonable, and this was the time, I felt, to bring it forward to the council for consideration.
Okay. And just one more follow-up. Obviously, this year, that's nice. We have some extra that potentially could pay for the part-time, but in all reality, next year's budget has to include the pays of anyone in the office, yourself in this new position, should it happen. Do you feel there's anywhere that you can cut at all in your budget? I mean, you know, as Councilor Vecia says, he wants everybody to cut a percent. Do you find that there is any place that it's possible to reduce in your office in regard... Now that if you get somebody who's more efficient, or is there any...
I actually wish...
There's only two of you.
Yeah. I actually wish that it quit, that there isn't. There's just the two salaries and the benefits. I think I have maybe $1,000, maybe $1,500 in office supplies. We have some conferences and meetings, and they're really... And that's all. There really isn't any place to cut, unfortunately. Thank you.
Councilor Steves?
One thing I was wondering is, was there ever any attempt to see if the current clerk wanted to get this accounting training?
I'm sorry.
Was there ever any attempt to see if your current clerk wanted to get the accounting training?
Yes, actually, if I could answer that. I think it was in the 13 budget is when several positions were upgraded to executive secretaries of major departments, and there were three of them. And I actually approached Mr. Clerk at that time to see if I could offer that to my clerk if she was interested, and he agreed to support me with that. And I actually went to her, and I asked her if she would be willing to do that, and she declined.
Oh, right. Also, I was wondering, I guess, I don't know if this is to you or to the town manager, but have there actually been any complaints from some of the outside vendors about process, about this slowing down their receipts? Or is that just something...
I'm sorry, again.
I was wondering if there... Have there been any complaints from outside vendors about this process slowing down their receipts or anything? Or is that something you've just observed?
I haven't received any personally, but Karen?
There actually have been in the past, and we've had to kind of work with the school and with the town to kind of coordinate our time schedule, and over the recent past, everything's been working very well timetable-wise.
And also, the last question is, do you have any ideas, since this money is fairly new for us, this $84 grand, do you have any particular plan for what to do with it? I don't know.
What to do with... I'm sorry. Say that again.
The money that came... The extra state aid, the $84,000 in extra state aid, do you have any particular plan beyond this on what to do with it?
Right. I think, and I'll defer after I just make a comment, the finance team is going to be getting together shortly, which will be the town manager, myself, the treasurer-collector, and the principal assessor, and we're going to be looking at the local receipts to see how they're coming in through the first quarter, just to see if what we projected for '15 looks reasonable. And at that point, then we're going to come up with either with where we are for a possible excess and what we would recommend to do with that. So, right now, there's no particular plan, and I'll defer to the town manager.
So, what happens is that there are a variety of ways we can treat it that are very complicated when we do what's called a recapitulation sheet to set the tax rate. The bottom line is irrespective of what we do, if this money is not appropriated, and we are not recommending any other purpose for this, it will fall to the bottom line and accrue to free cash that's certified in late summer, early fall of next year for this fiscal year. So, of the 40-odd thousand that we have, we're requesting 4,000 of that, and the rest will fall to free cash.
On side? Councilor Vecia?
The accounting clerk is making $823, and plus, there's another item here, accounting clerk, $2,500. So, that's hers too, the $2,500 on the budget.
Longevity.
Yeah.
Correct.
So, she's making $873, and how many hours a week does she work?
Full-time, 37 and 1/2.
37 and 1/2 hours, $873. There's people out there that would work for $873, some accountants, which is... That's a very good pay, $873. And Karen does a wonderful job, but I know other accountants in other towns, like Bill Ricker, like Webster. Her salary is higher than his, and she deserves it, but we're a small town. We don't have any free cash. We already said tonight, we only get 1.1 certified in free cash. We don't have any savings, so we should start thinking about saving monies for a rainy day. The rainy day fund in Massachusetts that the new governor, Baker, said he wasn't going to use, there's $1.8 billion in there. We got $1.1 million. Something happens in town, we're in big trouble. Thank you.
Ms. Harnoy?
Just a couple of quick things if I do. When I was looking at what I believed would be a fair and responsible amount to pay for the salary, I looked at our salary scale, and in MS 14, the CDBG coordinator is also paid that same salary range, which I feel, even though the programs aren't the same, it would be similar responsibilities within the program. And then I just want to point out about the free cash. We had $1,069,000 certified of free cash in the general fund. We had 2.5 million in water and 1.85 million in sewer. And we do have over $2 million in stabilization, and we do have a debt service reserve too. So, we do have reserves besides the free cash that the town has been trying to build up.
We're going to take a brief five-minute recess.
I just wanted to say one thing.
Do a recess real quick. We're in the debate.
I just wanted to state one thing.
Quickly, please.
The last time we looked, we had 3.75 in water and sewer. Now, you say we've got 4.3 million. We do know we're going to have to use that for capitalization. We're going to use that money in there. That's why that money's sitting there, is sitting in there in free cash, because we're going to use it. Because if we don't use it, the water and sewer is either going to be... Go a lot higher to pay for the repairs and everything else. Is that correct? Isn't that money sitting in water and sewer so we can use it? The free cash that's sitting in water and sewer, it's sitting there.
Yes. The money that's sitting in water and sewer is enterprise fund balance. It is to the water enterprise fund and the sewer enterprise fund what free cash is to the general fund.
I understand it, but we're going to use that money.
If the council so deems at a future date, yes.
Well, we have to use that, or the water and sewer is going to go even more sky-high.
You mean for capital improvements? Yes, I would say so.
Okay. That's my end. And that's all I wanted to know. Thank you.
Councilor Kraska?
I would like to make a motion to move the question, so we can go and vote.
Second.
Okay. So, this will be a roll call, vote to move the question.
Councilor Vandal?
No.
Councilor Vecia?
Yes.
Councilor Kraska?
Yes.
Councilor Clemmons? Councilor Strata?
Yes.
Councilor Manah?
Yes.
Councilor Marotti?
Yes.
Councilor Peliquin?
Yes.
Councilor Steves?
Yes.
Seven yes, two no?
Thank you. So, the motion itself, vote to approve the addition of a new position to Schedule I Assistant Town Accountant, MS 14, under the direction of the Finance Director Town Accountant with a salary range of $49,088 to $58,722, according to the details listed in the job description attached. Is the actual motion that's on the floor. Roll call, please.
Councilor Vecia?
No.
Councilor Kraska?
No.
Councilor Clemmons?
Yes.
Councilor Strata?
Nope.
Councilor Manah?
Yes.
Councilor Marotti?
No.
Councilor Peliquin?
No.
Councilor Steves?
Yes.
Councilor Vandal?
No.
Three yes, six no?
Motion does not carry. We're going to take a five-minute recess. We'll reconvene at 9:15. We are back in session. It is 9:19 PM. Councillor Vecchia?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules, so we could move Agenda Item 15 up, because we have lawyers sitting in.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councillor Kroska?
Yes.
Councillor Clemmons?
Yes.
Councillor Strata?
Yes.
Councillor Manna?
Yes.
Councillor Marotti?
Yes.
Councillor Peliquin?
Yes.
Councillor Steves?
Yeah.
Councillor Vandal?
Yes.
Councillor Vecchia?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Thank you. Motion carries. So vote to ratify the contract between the Town of Southbridge and Borrego Solar Systems for PV solar purchase and net metering credits.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We need a motion first.
So move. Second.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to have our two guests come up, Attorney Richard Holland and Bob Patterson. Mr. Holland and Mr. Patterson are two solar panel, solar industry experts. Attorney Holland has done a number of the net metering power purchase agreements in the state of Massachusetts. He's written articles on the subject, has lectured at the MMA, and is considered the attorney expert in the subject area. And Mr. Patterson has long and lengthy experience in the area of the solar industry and is serving as our technical expert as we've negotiated this opportunity. To give the council a quick overview, and I mean, I'm going to take this big, giant, incredibly complex thing and reduce it down to some very straightforward principles. The Green Energy Act in Massachusetts opened up the solar industry in Mass. And one of the things it provided was that cities and towns can enter into agreements with solar providers, so that the town can make money in a variety of ways with the installation of solar facilities. One of those opportunities is for us to buy what's called net metering credits. Now, with a net metering credit deal, which is a variation of a power purchase agreement, someone, in this case Borrego Industries, one of the largest solar manufacturers and installers, I'm sorry, installers in America, installs a solar panel field and generates electricity. For reasons that are in the law and very technical, it is advantageous to them financially to deal with the municipality in order to take the value of that energy and be able to use it in giving it back to the grid, if you will. And the way the mechanism works is this. The municipality buys something called a net metering credit. We're not buying electricity. We're buying a net metering credit. Think of it as a coupon. We buy it for a fixed price, and then we take that net metering credit, which has a value set by the Department of Public Utilities and Department of Transportation, according to a tariff that DPU establishes, and we take that credit and we take it to the power company that gives us our electricity, and we say, here's a net, one kilowatt of net metering credit. The credit we get is equal to the value of the net metering credit less the purchase price. That delta is what we give to them, and we get that much money off our bill. To get it a little bit more specific, we pay about 1.1 million dollars per year for electricity. That's all town sources, water enterprise, sewer enterprise, streetlights, buildings, et cetera. And this will, in the first year, based on the current value of the net metering credits, return a value to the town of 550,000. So in other words, if the council approves this this evening, at...
I'm sorry, to the chairman, how much did you say?
550,000.
Wow, thank you.
So we will, according to the current value of the net metering credits, we will cut our electric bill in half. Now, the net metering credit value is a floating value. It's, as I say, it's set by the Department of Public Utilities. It's a value that represents the cost of electricity, known as the commodity price, the transmission of that electricity, those are those big, high-tension wires you see, and the distribution of that electricity, which is those poles and wires out on the street. Each one of those components has a cost, and the value of the net metering credits is approximately representative of that combined cost. For that reason, it is almost impossible to foresee a set of circumstances under which the price that we pay for the net metering credits, 11.5 cents, is exceeded by the value at any given moment of the net metering credits as set by DPU. And in fact, right now, the purchase price is 11.5 cents, the net metering credit value is 23.4. We actually buy them for 11.5. We present them to the company for 23.4, and net-net, we receive a half million dollars. So that price will change. We know that as an absolute, that value of the net metering credit. The price we pay for them won't change. It's 11.5 times 2% per year for 20 years. This is a 20-year contract. The value of the net metering credits will go up and down as electricity goes up and down. But it is highly unlikely that it will, the value will ever be eclipsed by the purchase price. In fact, it's definitionally almost impossible, with the sole exception being if there is a change in the technology in the way electricity is produced, it is possible, in that instance, that we would pay more than the credits are valued at. In that case, there is, in the contract, a feature which allows us to open negotiations with Borrego in the interest of renegotiating the price because of the drop in the, in the value to the community. I think that is pretty, that is a good description of how this works theoretically. And Bob, and Rich, and to a lesser extent, myself, would be happy to answer any questions that the council has. One final note. As a hedge against the oscillating value of the net metering credits, what I would suggest to the council is that we take 20% of what we get each year, and we set it aside in a stabilization fund or in a capital reserve fund. And then, once every five years, we assess how we're doing. In other words, once, each, four times over the life of the contract. If you should have a period in time when the value of the net metering credits erodes to the point where you need money to offset that value, you'll have that money that you set aside each year to do that, as a buffer. If it doesn't, which is likely, what will likely be the case, then once every four or five years, you can take that 300, 400, 500,000 dollars, and you can put it towards something that you need. And my suggestion is that you consider OPEB, because, as you know, OPEB is a large liability, and it's currently unfunded, and this would be a significant amount of money toward that. So simultaneously, as it's a hedge against the marketplace, it's also a place where you can go in every four or five years and take a substantial amount of money and put it toward an unfunded liability. So I think that's a very conservative plan and one that works well for you. So having said that, Mr. Chairman, I will be happy to turn the questions over to our experts, and they will do their best to answer any questions the council might have.
Any questions or comments? Councillor Steves?
One thing I don't think I saw in the contract, and I don't know if this is something that would be part of this contract or something the planning board would negotiate, but I noticed that there was no reference to disposal of the, of the solar panels after the contract expires. Is there anything, anything we can add into that, or is that something the planning board would deal with?
Well, these, these agreements are net metering credit purchase agreements, so the facility is not on land owned by the town, and it's not typical that you would have provisions in these types, in these types of agreements for the disposal of the facility upon, you know, at the expiration of the 20-year agreement. Because what we're doing here is simply buying metering credits. Now, this, the contract would have a provision like that if these facilities were being installed on townland.
Oh, okay, okay. And also, it mentions here that it shall not produce less than 85% of the estimated annual production. What happens if, for some reason, it does?
The provision you're referring to is what I generally call a production guarantee. In the contract, Borrego is guaranteeing to the town that each facility, there are three separate facilities, so there are three agreements, one for each facility, that each facility will produce 85% of the estimated annual production every year over a three-year rolling basis. So let me give you, let me give you an example of what might happen. Let's say in the first year, it produces 75% of the estimated production.
Yep.
But over the next two years, you're producing 100%, so you make up for that difference. And every three years, there's a true-up. So if the average over three years is at least 85% of the estimated production, then they've complied. If, however, over a three-year period, the average is less than 85% of the estimated annual production, then they're required to pay the town what's called a production shortfall, which essentially is the savings that you would have had from the net metering credits that they had not produced to you up to that guaranteed amount.
Any other questions or comments? Just briefly, based on, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Just briefly, based on a resident that, that reached out to me today, this was, this is something that's already gone through any sort of process with neighbors and their input?
Yeah, the, there's actually three facilities that are producing the power that we're buying the value of. One of the three facilities is located here in Southbridge. The other two are out of town. This is a site on Gulfwood Road. My understanding is that the planning board has had a number of hearings on it. They will have their last hearing on it, I think, this Wednesday night, and give it a permit or not. But that really does not, it's not part of this deal. We're not giving them a permit, or not giving them a permit. That's entirely up to the planning board. If it were to be the case that that facility were not permitted, it's likely Borrego would substitute another facility, they're building many of these, in order to substitute the value. We would have to renegotiate all the contracts for a new location, but it's likely they would find another location to sell to us.
And then, just lastly, and I was on the fence as to whether or not I should ask the question, just because I've not had a chance to do any of the research myself, because this phone call came in, or the email and such came in late this afternoon, right before I left work to get into town, so I didn't get a chance to actually research it. Are there any sort of, and this was completely news to me, that there may or may not be any sort of ADHD connections somehow to solar power? This seemed kind of out of left field to me, but...
Yes, people are always concerned about electromagnetic fields. On a solar project, this will be behind a constrained fence in its own development area. There... There, with any electric source, any electric current, there is an electromagnetic field. Probably your largest electromagnetic fields in the community are from the distribution lines running up and down the street, and from the high voltage transmission lines bringing power into town. Some people have talked about there being electromagnetic fields on the inverters, which convert the direct current electricity from the solar panels into alternating current to go out to you as a customer, but those are minor in comparison to other sources of electromagnetic fields that would be in your community.
So any sort of, of impact would be minimal at best?
Minimal at best, and, and two of the three projects are not even in Southbridge. One is on Guelphwood Road, yes.
I have Counsel Clemens, and then-
Well, you brought up a, a little bit of, of what I was gonna say, because we did discuss this in lengthy terms at the general government meeting. Right, so we have one contract here that says Guelphwood Road, but there are actually three contracts, correct, Mr. Pecos?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and what we are doing is purchasing, the, solar is going to be somewhere. In this case, we were told that generally, when you do a project in a community, you approach municipality in that community, sort of as the first potential buyer, because you make nice with the, the locals, I guess. Would that be correct?
Yes, that, that's preferable to some communities.
Right, and however, because, because Mr. Murray brought up some concerns at general government also, but again, it's my understanding that we're gonna buy electric from you, potential, or credits, metering, net metering credits from you, from your solar project, from the solar project with Borrego, has nothing to do with our, within our jurisdiction of whether you actually have a place to make these, make this, these solar fields or not. It really just is all about us purchasing the net metering credits. We have no jurisdiction over the rest of it.
It's a credit purchase contract, that's all it is. As a matter of, there are communities that I represent that are in, almost up on the Salem, New Hampshire border, that are buying credits halfway across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts.
Right.
So these projects are, are distant from the actual recipient of the credit.
Right, and, and I would expect fully that our planning board locally, in terms of this project that they're working with you on, or with Borrego on, that they will do their due diligence and, and make a determination based on their, their ability to do so. So basically, for us, it's whether or not we agree with the concept of these net metering credits, and whether they'll be beneficial to the community over the 20-year term. So, and 20 years, what that was brought up at general government, in terms of, there really is no shorter contract time, based on financing, financial obligations, and you know, your financing companies that back you and such?
And pardon me, and I apologize that I didn't distinguish for the audience who are, this is Bob Patterson, Towns' consultant, and I'm recalling from Copelman and Page. But that's true, 20 years is a typical term for these types of contracts, for a number of reasons, not the least of which is, in order for the folks who finance these projects to get their full return on investment, they require the full 20-year period. So generally, there are not shorter terms. We may have seen shorter terms five years ago, but now they're all 20-year agreements, and sometimes even more. There is, there is a, there is a right to renew for two additional five-year periods up to the town, of course.
Right, I saw that in there. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Steve?
Um, thanks. Two things. One is that I want to bounce back to what Counsel Marriarty was saying a second ago, about the, about the electromagnetic fields, because I got the same call you did. And I was wondering, I, I know I talked about, talked to you about this a little bit earlier, but I was wondering if you could tell me, do you know of any, any particular range from those fields? How far, how far away can you actually pick them up?
I have no idea, as anybody who's measured, that anybody's been concerned about the inverter, electromagnetic fields, and has done measurement on arrays.
Okay.
So I don't know.
I was curious. I don't either. And also, I don't know, I guess this would be to Mr. Holland, is, is a 20-year contract also pretty standard for other forms of energies?
Well, no, for electricity purchase, for example, no, but for, for net metering credit purchase agreements, yes, very typical, 20-year terms.
Also, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counsel Clemens?
Yes.
Counsel Strata?
Yes.
Counsel Manna?
Yes.
Counsel Marriarty?
Yes.
Counsel Pellican?
Yes.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Vandal?
Yes.
Counsel Vecchia?
Yes.
Counsel Kraska?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Thank you, motion carries.
Thank you.
Sorry to keep you gentlemen so late, but thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next up is a vote to approve the transfer of 17,100 dollars from account number 6344, upgrade to the Dennison Hill water tank to account number 6335, engineering of Dennison Hill tank, to pay for the final costs and closeout of the project.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments, discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counsel Strata?
Yes.
Counsel Manna?
Yes.
Counsel Marriarty?
Yes.
Counsel Pellican?
Yes.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Counsel Vandal?
Yes.
Counsel Vecchia?
Yes.
Counsel Kraska?
Yes.
Counsel Clemens?
Yes.
Nine yes?
Thank you, motion carries. Agenda item number 14, vote to amend town bylaw section 3-101.4 to reflect the change, quote, "Non-residents may actively serve on the Southbridge Airport Commission, providing that prospective member is a resident of Massachusetts, prospective member has an aircraft based at the Southbridge Municipal Airport. No more than two non-residents may serve actively on the commission at one time," end quote. This would be the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Vecchia?
Says vote to amend town bylaw section 3-10114. Can somebody read that town bylaw to me, please?
I have it.
Does that include all permissions and committees?
No, just this one.
Well, can somebody read it?
Would you like me to read the bylaw?
Sure.
Section 3-104, multiple-member body internal organization. Each multiple-member body shall at a minimum annually elect from its membership a chair, vice-chair, and clerk.
That is in the one-
I think you're reading the wrong portion.
It's 10114.
101.1, 101.4.
It's 3-104, oh, 101, I'm sorry, I apologize. It's late.
It is.
It's almost 10, I've been up since 4, so I apologize.
Town residency required?
Yes, unless some other provision is made in a particular bylaw pursuant to section 3-101.3, or other provision of law, or the town charter, all Southbridge, all members of multiple-member bodies shall at all times be residents of the town of Southbridge, provided, however, non-residents who hold a town office or town employment may serve by virtue of their office as a member of a multiple-member body. Any person who during the term of office as a member of a multiple-member body removes from the town and becomes a resident of another municipality shall be deemed to have resigned as a member of the multiple-member body.
Well, my question is, I asked it to begin with, does this include all committees? So it's just not the airport commission?
We're stressed about it.
Right, it's for all committees, right?
No.
No, the impact of this, because it's specifically named, would be just the airport commission, that's, that's how it's worded.
Well, once, if you did that, what if we had another committee and they wanted non-residents? Couldn't they say, would you set precedent here?
That would have to come back to the council.
They could, but they could go see a lawyer, like setting precedent, am I correct or not correct?
There's no precedent set unless the council wants there to be a precedent set.
Well, if we vote for this, we're setting a precedent, aren't we?
Again, any other changes would be up to the council, so that would be up to the council to decide.
I understand, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Steves?
I was next.
I'm sorry, you, I'm sorry, you're right, Counsel Manna was ahead of you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I know it's late. I guess my question was, where would we be fitting this in to? It would be 3-104, 101, I'm sorry, point four, point, where, where would we be adding this into the bylaw?
I would suggest to the council that you deal with whether or not you want this to happen substantively, and then I'll have the town attorney word more precisely, if you'd like, where it will appear. I think we need some direction on whether you, I don't want to spend money on the town attorney to have it come back here and have you say no. I'd rather know if you want this, and then I'll have the money spent to have it codified.
I understand, and I appreciate that, thank you. Also, I did, because I was not able to make that subcommittee meeting, I did send a email out to Mr. Prouff, and he did explain to me the reasoning why they're asking for this. It appears that it's hard to get somebody in town to-
It's solving two problems simultaneously. The first is that we can't attract enough people to serve on the commission. I think as the councils are, we've got dozens of vacancies, we're having a hard time recruiting enough citizens to all the boards, committees, and commissions we have. So that, this solves one problem. The second problem is it taps into some expertise that we don't necessarily have in the community, and in this case, at least one of these folks that they've got in mind is an airline pilot who has obviously enormous experience and can contribute very well to the commission, and that's not somebody that we currently have in the community. This gentleman is outside the community, he's an active volunteer, and he'd like to serve, and, you know, speaking for myself, while ordinarily, I am not a proponent of having non-residents on boards, committees, or commissions, because boards, committees, and commissions should reflect the community that they're part of, in this case, I think there's an argument to be made, this is a regional airport, they are receiving substantial funding from the Commonwealth, a couple-million-dollar grant for a new terminal building, and it in fact has been called a regional airport. So I think there's some, some reason to consider this request, and it'll bring somebody in from the outside. It's two members, it's not a majority, not even close to the majority of the, of the committee, and I think it'll provide great strength to it, so I think there's some, some wisdom to it.
And Mr. Prouff's email, he does state that the, the interested party has based airplanes at the Southbridge Airport for 28 years. He's from Sutton, and he's a pilot for American Airlines, so I believe he is well-qualified. Thank you.
Counselor Steves?
Thanks. One thing, I personally don't have a problem with this particular issue in itself. One thing I was wondering about, though, is if you're gonna send it to our town attorney, maybe we ought to be looking at other, if there are any other boards that we should, we might want to consider doing this with. I mean, I agree with the county manager that by and large, town boards should be town residents. I completely agree with that. But I also was talking to somebody a couple of days ago about how there's, there are many people here who spend so much time in the community, whether they're running a business or they're working in town, that they basically only sleep in the town that they're, that they actually claim as home. And they might want to be more involved in this community, because they're here most of the time. So I don't know if we could maybe think about doing something like that, and kind of, that would also help get us more people involved in our town boards, because there are huge numbers of vacancies.
If the council is interested in pursuing that as a separate matter, I'd be happy to do whatever research you need done. That's not before you tonight, but if that's something you're interested in, happy to look into it for you.
Counsel Clemens?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. One of the provisions that they put in here about owning an aircraft at the airport is something that is not currently required of the local members, which is nice. So they, again, the members expressed to us, the commission members expressed to us, that, that gives a little more, you know, desirability to, to be part of something. They already are vested here in our community, they keep their airport, their airplanes here, and they want to participate on a, a more integral level than what they already are. So it shows their commitment here to Southbridge. I agree, you know, we are getting into that regional side of things when it comes to our airport, and I'd also point out, I guess, you know, our airport commission falls under many other rules that are totally out of all realm of responsibilities. They deal with the FAA and, you know, state federal regulations and such, they're pretty much a stand, standalone, they have their own budget, and they, they make many of their decisions autonomously, apart from us, based on the rules and regulations set forth by others. So I think this particular commission is somewhat different than what we have in, on others. While I may agree that there are other opportunities out there that, that might lend itself to non-residents, in this case, we were addressed by the commission to consider this, and I think it's a worthy request, request on their part. Thank you.
Counsel Kraska?
Yes, I just, I have a couple of concerns with this item. Number one, because I, I understand if all of our meetings, all of our commissions are open to the public, so if an individual wants to be part of a discussion, they can be there, and they can voice their opinion. The only thing that's mattering is if they're voting or not. Seeing that, you know, I'm afraid to set a precedent. I'm afraid that by us saying, yeah, non-residents, you know, the conservation commission, somebody else will come to us and say, we want this too, because this person has this level of expertise in agriculture, this person has the level of expertise in academic development. I, I think, you know, the bylaws were written for a purpose to engage our community, and again, I think we have to be very careful. I understand the very, the man is highly qualified, and again, if he wants to be participant in what's going on, he's more than welcome to the meetings. And, you know, seeing what he does for a living, are they gonna adjust the meetings according to his schedule, like that he can make the meetings? Those are questions that I would have also, you know, because if he's constantly flying, you know, these are the things, I, I wouldn't want to open up a can of worms, like has been the past practice of councils, that we open a lot of cans of worms and then we try to fix them. I think if we have something right now that is not broken, why try to fix something? If the gentleman wants to be involved, come down to the meetings, put your input, the only thing is, you're not a voting member. That's my personal opinion. I'm afraid to create a precedence in regards to, you know, Joe, Joe, John Doe knows Jane, and she has the expertise, and here we go, we have a whole bunch of requests to open up our commissions. And I understand our, our participation's very low, but knowing this, this gentleman has an invested interest, so of course he's gonna want to be part of this commission, but at the same time, seeing that he has an invested interest, I think he would participate in the public input of that meeting. That's all I got to say for tonight.
Just briefly, on my end of it, my concerns are twofold. One, similar to what's kind of been stated by a few other counselors, I think this opens up Pandora's box. I think one of the other problems I have with this is, I think, an unintended consequence of this might be that it actually de-incentivizes locals to actually take part. It's hard enough to get them to come in as-is, and if they feel that, whether it's through the buddy network, or that there's other people outside of this town that are more qualified, I think it's, it's only going to serve to give people one more excuse as to why they shouldn't get involved. Beyond that, for anybody that, that, in this sort of situation where somebody's had an aircraft at that airport for close to 30 years, I know recently, when the, the airport commission was here, they talked a lot about bringing back the Friends of the Southbridge Airport as a nonprofit private group. Whether or not that's been done as yet or not, I don't know, but that's something that, being a private group, they would be able to bring in somebody from Leicester, Auburn, Worcester, who cares where, they're able to do that so long as they have that, and that's somewhat of its own little lobbying group and support network. So those are my thoughts on that. I don't know if anybody else has any questions or comments. Counsel Steves?
That's an interesting point, too. I hadn't thought of that. Through you to the manager, one question is, has there been, have there actually, has this, this board had actual concerns about meeting Quorm?
Yes.
Yes, on several occasions, yes.
When, when, I know from the, from the subcommittee meeting that there's, what is it, that there are two vacancies now?
They're, they're getting another vacancy, excuse me.
No, so they won't even have Quorm after, shortly. How much of an effort have we made as a community, quite frankly, to recruit people to fill these vacancies? Did anybody go out to actually start recruiting within town before doing this?
I think, to be candid with you, the boards and committees that have vacancies are constantly recruiting, trying to find people. The town- The town advertises on the website all the vacancies, but I mean, there's not a lot we can do to recruit. It's really a matter of people having an interest in the particular board, committee, or commission and wanting to serve. It's hard for us to go out there and grab a citizen and say, hey, how'd you like to be on a board? I mean, that's a tough activity. It actually is much more likely that you folks would do that with friends and supporters...
We do.
...you know, that know you, that like to be involved. Typically, a lot of the recruitment will come either from the council directly, or it will come from the board and committee that has the vacancy itself. Staff, it's an impossible role for us to do.
Do we know how many people have come forward to express interest in vacancies, either on this board or other boards recently? I know the council and aging director mentioned a couple coming forward, and I know there's... I had heard of a couple for ConCom.
I just interviewed two folks today for council and aging, and one for ConCom, and two other people I'll be interviewing for vacancies on the fire station study committee. So there are folks that come forward to serve, certainly, who have, you know, a particular interest, and that's where people like to spend their time. This one has been a problem, getting people on.
All set. Counselor Vandal?
I just think it's not a precedent, and I don't want to see that happen. They mean well. The person that wants the job, I know, very qualified, but the thing is, is I don't want to start a precedent. How can you tell somebody from...come up for the Conservation Committee, and, you know, it's going to be our decision, but how can you say yes to some people and no to others? So I'm not going to go for this. It will be starting a precedent. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Counselor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, to the town manager. Mr. Pecos, could you describe to us what is unique about the airport versus some of the other boards that we have that may...we may want to attract people from out of town to come in with their qualifications?
Well, I think the only thing that distinguishes this particular commission from all the others is the decisions that other boards, committees, and commissions make are exclusively...exclusively affect the community. So if the planning board makes a decision about a site plan application or subdivision, it affects this community. The Conservation Commission makes a decision on a wetlands permit, it affects this community. The airport commission, and the FAA, and Department of Transportation govern it, when it makes decisions, it affects a regional asset, and that's unusual. Most...there are only a few towns in the state that have regional airports, and they...in fact, the state issued a report recently talking about the regional significance of municipal airports, and it's a very persuasive study that talks about how these airports have a regional effect on the economy, not just the local economy. So I think it's very much the case that airports, the impact of decisions the commission makes have impacts far beyond just Southbridge, and for that reason, it's worthy of consideration of the council, to think in terms of them as a regional asset, not just a municipal asset.
Do you think that it would benefit us to consider a separate bylaw just for the airport commission?
A what, I'm sorry?
A separate bylaw for the airport commission? Do you think that would benefit us?
However you...
And that would take away the...take away the conflict?
Sure. You know, however the council does it, be it a separate bylaw altogether, which we're happy to draft, or an amendment to the existing bylaw, however you do it, really entirely up to you. Happy to write it whatever way you're comfortable with.
So would it benefit us now to postpone this until something...you could talk to the airport commission, or perhaps at a subcommittee, or...
Well, again, I think... I think I need a sense of the council. What I don't want to do is waste time working on something that the council does not support. So if the council can give me an indication, conceptually, if you support the idea, then I, you know, I can present it to you in a different way, but it, you know, I kind of need a reading from the council where you are.
Right. Well, I think because the regional airport, the municipal airport, is unique in itself from the other boards, and as you described, it does affect the region, I think maybe it would. I would support...I don't know if anybody else would support that being a separate bylaw by itself, and that would take away the conflict from the other...the other issues, so. Thank you.
Counselor Clements?
I think the town manager put it into great perspective. You said that very well in terms of the reaches that this decision makes. And I think it also lays the groundwork to be able to give a very good explanation to another committee that affects us locally more so than what the airport commission does. I think our argument is well laid out with what you just said, Mr. Pecos, in terms of the far-reaching that this commission has compared to your local planning board, your local rec committee, whatever it be. Certainly, the argument is very clear, to which you...so when people come up and say, geez, we want somebody from out of town to be on the plant...on our Conservation Commission, it is a local issue that they deal with. The airport commission deals with many, many other issues that are far-reaching than just Southbridge, to the benefit of Southbridge, luckily. Thank you.
Just briefly, not that I'm not able to speak for others, however, the impression I get, and certainly on my end, is whether this is in this current form or as a separate bylaw is irrelevant in terms of the opposition that I'm hearing and seeing. It's more so just the principle of the matter. So just offering that as a comment, on my end anyways. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Counselor Steves?
Yeah, just one comment is that I think that some of the other commissions that we've been talking about as being locally oriented actually do have regional impact. EDC, I can see ConCom, because we've got the river. And, you know, hearing this, the conversation flowing around, I don't think I would want them to be regional boards. It's kind of a...it's kind of a conflict. It's...I'm trying to figure out...I'm honestly trying to figure out where I stand on this one, so.
We'll find out in a couple minutes. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
No.
Counselor Pellican?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
No.
Counselor Vandal?
No.
Was it a no?
No.
Counselor Vecchia?
No.
Counselor Carrasco?
No.
Counselor Clements?
Yes.
Counselor Estrada?
No.
Three yes, six no?
Motion is not carried. Moving on to agenda item number 16, Counselors' forum, and we will begin with Counselor Vandal.
I'm all set this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Vecchia?
Thank you. As I've been stating right along, that I'd like to see each budget for FY next year, 2016, cut at least 1%. I have a pledge here, which I'm going to read. "We, as Southbridge Town Councilors, pledge to be more stringent in protection of the taxpayers by lowering each and every budget for FY 2016 by at least 1%. We state the following reasons for this action. One, taxpayers need relief due to increase in water and sewer rates. Two, landfill monies will soon expire. Three, stagnant commercial tax base. Four, increase in out-of-school placement." This pledge is signed by Town Council Chair Moriarty, Town Council Vice Chair Carraso, DPW Chair Town Counselor Vandal, Town Counselor Estrada, and Town Counselor Vecia. This represents the necessary majority of the council to pass a 2016 budget of at least a 1% cut in each and every budget, including the school department. This should also serve as a directive to the acting town manager to put our wishes into action going forward, Mr. Town Manager. In relation to any and all costs, and notify the school department of same. That's all I got to say tonight. Thank you.
Counselor Steves?
First off, I would like to object to that, because I had never seen it until it was sitting right beside me. Secondly, I would have to think about it, because I don't believe in just arbitrarily destroying things. We need to look at what we need to do and make decisions based on what the prior...what our needs are.
We have five paragraphs.
I saw that.
Right, this is Counselor Steves' floor at the moment.
That's beside the point. Anyway, a couple of things I'd like to point out. First off, obviously, we had a lengthy discussion about vacancies and such, and I would like to remind the people who are watching that we do have a ton of vacancies, and we would really need your support to get involved in the community. Almost every board has at least one, some have several. So we need anybody to get involved who has an interest. Some have specific requirements, as you've been hearing from some of the commissions coming up. Some are not nearly as complicated as they may sound. In many cases, you just have to have an interest and be willing to learn on jobs, so to speak, and that can make a huge difference. So please, come forward. Secondly, I wanted to point out that I would like...we were talking about the landfill a little while ago, Casella's stuff, and I would love to see us...I'd love to see if we could get an update on the tie-in bond onsite monitoring well review that was done maybe two years ago, maybe a year and a half ago, updated to the present, and also one that looks at all of the residential wells that are already being tested, to see what the results there are. I think we need to have both of those going forward into any consideration of contract changes or landfill...anything that Casella may want to bring forward, we need to have this stuff before they do.
Cost, would you be willing to send me an email, please, to kind of lay that out specifically?
Sure.
So that I want to be sure to get that, and I'm not familiar with it, so...
Okay, because I know I have...
And then I'll sit down right away.
Okay, thank you. I know I've read the original tie-in bond report. I was looking for it this afternoon, and I can't find it in hard copy, so I don't remember if I had electronic or not. But I know I certainly got it from Chris Clark and Jim Warren, because I remember sitting down for at least an hour in your office, talking to them about it. So that's something I think we definitely need to know about before Casella does anything. The other thing is that I would like to...I'd like to mention that on December 4th at 7:00 PM, the Economic Development Commission is doing a small business seminar up here in the chambers for people who want to learn the basics of how to start small businesses and get involved in some of the basic issues. I don't know exactly what they'll discuss, but if you have questions and whatnot, definitely come forward and be part of that. And also on Friday, the 5th, and actually it starts on Thursday, is the Festival of Giving Trees. It's December 4th. It runs through that whole weekend. But Friday, the 5th specifically, they're doing a talk with Laurel Schrader, who will talk about some of the environmental concerns and toxic relations related to cancer, specifically breast cancer, because that's what they study. But this is kind of the...we've talked a lot about Relay for Life in Town, but this is kind of the other side of Southbridge's support for the fight against cancer, focusing more on environmental concerns and toxins and this kinds of stuff that...the real preventive stuff that we can do some more research on. Thank you.
Counselor Pellican?
Nothing for me tonight.
Okay. Counselor Manna?
Oh, thank you. I have a few things. This is going to go to our town manager, Mr. Pecos. I was asked by a citizen a couple of days ago if there was anything that we could do as a town council in regards to our school system still being on Level 4, and with the MCAS test results being what they are and whatnot. So I told him that I would look into it. I believe that we, as a town council, have a responsibility to our community to ensure the well-being of our town and make sure that it's not being compromised in any way. And with what I...what feels like a continuous downward spiral that's been happening for many, many years, it seems like, being on Level 4, I feel it's time. I ask you this: Is there anything that we can do as a town council on the current situation of our school district?
As the council recalls in your goals and objectives, which I had drafted for you based on council concerns, there are some very specific and on-point goals dealing with performance of the school system. We have not yet embraced that conversation with the school department, but the council has unanimously voted to pursue those, and one of those goals deals with a conversation with the school department about what is their strategic plan moving forward, what is their plan to deal with following MCAS scores and things like that. So I think the short answer to the question is, this is something you've already decided you want to do. My suggestion on how best to do it would be to have a joint meeting with the school committee, similar to the one we have, but with an agenda that's built upon what your goals say, specifically talking about MCAS scores, talking about what's the school improvement plan, talking about what is the school committee's plan for the permanent naming of a superintendent. I would suggest you invite a representative of the Department of Primary and Secondary Education, the new DOE Department of Education, to be present, because I know they've been following and working with the school department on this, and have a discussion publicly about all those subjects. And I don't know where it will lead you, but certainly having the dialogue is important. I've made this observation to the council before, and I'm sure I'll make it for you again. A great deal of what we do here collectively is offset by the lack of success of the school department, the school system. If the school system is not successful, then it creates a serious impediment to the growth of the community and the development of it. We have a problem. We all know that. There is no secret to that. And I think the only way to get on with improving it and making it better is to assist the school committee, and that begins, I think, with a joint conversation. Just my suggestion, but, you know, having...I mean, we don't have jurisdiction. I don't have any official jurisdiction in the charter. You don't have any official jurisdiction, but it certainly is the case that as leaders of the community, having a respectful dialogue with the school committee, I think they would welcome, and I think it could produce some good results for the community. That's my idea.
Okay, well, I would ask, then, that the town council, us as a whole, draft up a letter to the DESE. And with that, I'd like to make a motion that the town council draft a letter requesting a representative from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, the DESE, come in and explain to us in an open joint meeting with the school committee here in council chambers, the path that our district is on, and the path we need to be on to correct the current situation of our school district, and what our options are.
I'd second that motion.
Any discussion? Counselor Carrasco?
I do have a question, because I believe they came and did that to the school committee, and that video is available. So, I mean, we're not going to...we're not hearing what the school committee's saying. We're going to hear it straight from them. So I think it would be ideal to watch that video. I'm not...I know we have two members of the school committee. If they didn't come, then if they did come, explain, then that's something that I think it's...I don't know. I don't know. I haven't seen the video, honestly, but I believe that's what they came to do. So that's what I'm saying. To have another redundant presentation...
With all due respect, Counselor Carrasco, I believe that our community deserves answers. Since 1998, when I moved back here from Ohio, we have been on a Level 4...our district has been on Level 4. That's way too long. It's almost 20 years. So I'm requesting that a joint meeting with the Department of Education, the school committee, and the town council, and the community can come in and ask questions. What's going on? Why are we still on Level 4? What's it going to take to get us off Level 4? This is hurting our community. This is stopping people from buying homes. People are sending their kids out of district to school choice. They're fed up. Can you blame them? I don't blame them. So I'm requesting this. It's somebody...the Department of Education, they do this. They come down, that's their job. Let them do it in a joint committee. With the town... Let them do it in a joint committee with the town council, with the school committee here in council chambers, eared for everyone to see.
With all due respect, Ms. Manna, I, I am not, at no point in time, trying to say that we don't have a problem. We have a serious problem. It's chaotic. It is chaotic. From no, there's no stability. From administration to, to other areas, there, there's none. But my, my concern to your motion is, it is something that the department already has done. So I'm not sure if the department would agree to that, because...
We won't know unless we write a letter and ask them.
Which you are correct. But again, I think, have, have we watched? I, I would suggest that we watch the video to see what they said. Because I think it's imperative to find out from them, to hear. But again, that's, that's, again, I think we have some serious issues. We have a lot of problems, and it's not helping. As somebody that serves as the chair of the Town Manager Search Committee, we have seen it in that committee. We have seen it hands-on with several candidates.
I believe the candidate dropped out just because of that fact.
So that is something that we, I will not disclose, but we've had conversations with each candidate that we have interviewed, and that has been one of the major concerns, our school department, and the negative press that we continue to hear about it. I think jointly, what we have to do is, is create positive press where we can flood the press and let people know, yes, there's a problem, but it is being worked on.
I recommend that we, we do.
I'm sorry to interrupt in your, Counsel's floor.
Erin Quinney, A. Crescent Street. Through you, Mr. Chair, to Counselor Manna. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education comes every, quarterly to discuss our accelerated improvement plan, which would be like a district improvement plan, but because we have been on Level 4 for such a long period of time and that we're at a Level 4 district, they come and report on that accelerated improvement plan. The AIP itself is available on our website, the tap, the school website. And when we had our last report from the DESE, it was a positive report. It was the first time in a very long time that they had positive things to say of the direction that the school department was heading, the district was heading, in moving towards getting out of Level 4. We've had several meetings with commissioners from the Department of Elementary and Edu, Elementary and Secondary Education, discussing what is needed to get us out of Level 4. And it's sustaining. Our MCAS aren't going down. They're actually going up as a whole. Our MCAS scores have gone up. They're trending upward, and that is part of that process. There are structures in place, including new curriculum that has been implemented, how that's being facilitated, response to intervention, our closing the gap on special ed and English language learners and supporting those. So as Counselor Carrasco said, that tape is available. It's not the last meeting, but it's the meeting previous to that. And the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education will be coming to report our next quarterly report, and they are anticipating that being around January.
That, that is great, Ms. Quinney. But what I'm suggesting, suggesting is a joint meeting with the school committee, the town council, the DESE, and have the public here. And they have questions that they want answered. And I'm not making it up. I wouldn't have brought it up if I wasn't asked. So I'm asking this. I'm asking for the support of a letter from the town council to go to the DESE to do a joint meeting with the school committee to answer the questions and have it open to the public, for the public to come and comment on.
Counsel Clements?
My, well, my question was, how old was this video? And you said it was the time before last, so six months at least?
No, weeks.
No, two weeks.
Two, two weeks ago. So four weeks ago. They're coming every two weeks?
No, coming quarterly.
Okay, they come quarterly, but, so.
The last one was about two weeks.
Okay, so the video is from four weeks ago. Okay. I still have concerns in regard to, somewhat, Counsel Manna is maybe a little bit different, but I don't see the permanency going on. I'm, you know, you guys are still in flux. You still, you have a, a one-year contract with your superintendent. There's no search committee. There's no, I guess I'm looking for answers for the community. We are the supporters. We are the ones telling, as I said at your meeting previously, we're the ones collecting the taxes, where most of them go to the school. And yet, we can't attract a manager for ourselves because we can't get the house cleaned up for 20 years in the school system. I would like to ask the DESE, what is their next step? What are they prepared to do, take charge of, whatever, if indeed the results are different? Coming down, I guess we have to wait, we have to wait a year, six months for next test results? I mean, where do we have to, that's a long time, again. That's, that's a long time. I want to know when it is somebody is going to actually do something and, and not wait years on end to, to find out that we're still not where we need to be. So my question to DESE would be, when does the state actually put up? That's all.
Brent Abrahamsen, 26 Franklin Terrace, I'm here as a citizen. I don't speak for the school committee, though I am on the school committee. I would first ask procedurally, was this vote that is being requested on the agenda?
It was not.
I made a motion.
Therefore, isn't it an appropriate vote?
Yes, it is.
I'm speaking to the chair, Ms. Manna. That's the proper way, I believe.
Within, within legalities, they can do so. Motion such as this can be brought up.
So the, the vote could be taken right now?
It could.
Okay. So that, just, you know, considering a, a school committee meeting, could vote to call some of your people before us for questioning?
School committee could, in, in theory, also vote to write a similar letter to whomever, whatever agency or board or committee or individual they so choose.
Right. So, but it doesn't show a, a level of collegiality. It shows a level of confrontation, does it not? Have we not enough confrontation in this town without encouraging more? Do you want a lynch mob? Is that what you're looking for? We don't need that.
We don't want a lynch mob. We want answers.
Yeah, you want answers.
And the citizens want answers too, Mr. Abrahamsen.
Point of order. Lots of argument going on here.
Correct, and, and at the moment, Ms. Abrahamsen has the floor, please. Thank you.
Through you. All the information that is required is out there. All that is being sought for here is a public display. And I think that the committee, the town council, should reject that. Thank you.
I would just briefly offer my own comments and thoughts on the matter. One, I've, I've personally been disappointed in the, the attendance, the interest, and the involvement, not of this council, but councils over the years in the past and currently, in school matters in terms of being more active. I've been to a great number of school committee meetings. I've seen Counselor Steves at a number. I've seen Counselor Carrasco at a number. I've seen Counselor Manna attend on occasion as well. I've also heard from this dais, I believe last year, a comment about having never attended or seen one of the school committee members, which shocked me. The comments in terms of the school district and its performance over the last, say, 15 years, downward spiral is one way to put it. I've, I've said it when I ran. I said it before I ran. I continue to say it, that it's, it's not a downward spiral. It's a death spiral. And we have been in a death spiral for a number of years in that school department. And every time you think it's, it's kind of hit rock bottom because you don't think it could get any lower, it finds a way to get lower. We find a way to excavate further and further into the bowels. In terms of the DESE, if, if you attend meetings or, or are watching them, at least on cable access, the replays on YouTube, whatever, they are there regularly. They were there on hand just a, a month or so ago to watch the latest of the debacles that took place at the dais. And quite frankly, the school side has been a large problem and has been for a long time and will be for a long time. Because this is not something that a new superintendent, a new school committee, or a new anything is going to turn around overnight, over the course of a school year, a fiscal year, and so forth. The problems are systematic and they're deep. I think Counselor Carrasco brought up the turnover and the turnstile effect that's gone on there. And, and that is absolutely true. In the last 15 years, if you, if you were to sit down and try and count the number of superintendents, whether permanent or acting or interim, and same thing with the principals, just at the high school level alone, never mind at the elementary schools, it's, it's staggering. As somebody who's in education, I just can't imagine working in that environment personally in terms of not knowing, not even year to year, month to month, quarter to quarter, who your leadership is going to be. Last year, there were, what, I think, three, maybe four people who served as principal at Southbridge Middle High School in one year. In the last five years, I haven't worked for that many principals or administrators. So that is, that's staggering. I work currently with a, with a teacher who was once a teacher here in Southbridge and was here when Joe Bailey was principal. And that, in terms of, of personnel administrators, that is, might as well be the Renaissance. It might as well have been 300 years ago, because we have gone through that much turnover. In terms of reaching out to, to the DESE, I'm, I'm in support of that. However, I think, and I, I'm trying to be measured based on just a quick conversation I had with the, the school committee chair earlier today on my way into town after work. They have obviously, over the next few weeks, couple of weeks, a great deal that's in flux with an investigation that's ongoing that may or may not have great ramifications on that school district, on our school district. I would prefer not to back the school committee and the school department into any more of a corner than they've already been backed into, to an extent by, not necessarily as a whole, but perhaps as a whole, by their own actions and inactions over the last 10 to 15 years. I would rather, personally, wait until, I think it's December 3rd, give or take, when that investigation is, is set to be concluded, especially with the holidays coming up on us and, and knowing how the state tends to work. I would rather see us try to work something out with the school side, give them the opportunity to be a partner in this, which provides partnership, it invites, invokes rather a, kind of a shared goal and vision moving forward, and quite frankly, a lot more buy-in. If this is something that the school side, based solely on reaction from our joint meeting last month and comments that were made there, if this is something that they feel is being force-fed, the response on their end is, is, you know, I'm trying to not think of Italian hand language or, or other vulgarities, but that's the response we're going to get. And I would like to think, granted, the cat's out of the bag on this to begin with, but I would like to think that, given the opportunity, once this investigation is complete and they're able to figure out what their next step is, that they would then be able to be in a much better position for us to sit down, I'm going to guess in January, that's just ballparking it, knowing that we've got the holidays and getting the state here on short notice is not likely to happen, especially considering the comments that I have heard directly and indirectly that the DESE has said in terms of taking on a greater role here in Southbridge, which is not exactly what I'd like them to say. But I think that would be the more appropriate response or, or course of action. I think it's the more deliberate course of action, and I think it is the, just the smarter move all around in terms of moving forward. We have been, again, I, I said it, and, you know, it's, it's not a light term. We have been in a death spiral for more than a generation. We have seen, since Counselors Carrasco and I, and Counselor Pelican, who all were kind of within a couple of years of one another, since then, you have got, you have seen children who have gone from kindergarten through high school, whether it's here or school choice at Quaybach, Tantasca, Shepherd Hill, or elsewhere. But we have seen those, those kids who, to an extent, have been left by the wayside. Not all of them, to a great degree, I've always believed. Having taught in, in a very good school system and another one that has a, quite a different reputation, education for the most part is what these kids make of it, what the families make of it. You can take the best student in the world and throw him in the worst school, and he or she is still going to make a success of themselves. You can take the worst student in the world and put him in the best school in the world, and it's not going to make a lick of difference. Do we have a problem? Absolutely. I don't think anybody would, would argue otherwise. And if they did, you know, they, they ought to be in Bellevue. However, I think we need to act prudently. I think we need to act inclusively, and I think we need to act diligently. Anybody else have questions or comments?
Well, I would like to say, we did have that joint meeting last, last month. But I don't know about any of the other counselors, but I know I wasn't asked what we would like to see on the agenda. I did say to you, prior to that meeting, what I would like to see on the agenda, but I was never asked. From what I understand, it was the school committee that was asked, and we were never asked for anything to be on that agenda. I don't even have the minutes. We didn't even have a recording clerk.
I, I think as far as the recording clerk thing, that was discussed last week, and there have been, to my knowledge, nothing provided as yet. In terms of the other part of it, the agenda, as was mentioned, I forget if it was here in a subcommittee meeting or otherwise, there was more or less negotiation of the agenda. The school committee chair reached out to each, or I presume, each of the members of the school committee and provided a lengthy list. That was not from direction or anything to that effect. My impression going into it was we were going to discuss, she and I, putting together an agenda that was based on what was the most imperative needs in terms of actions going forward immediately. Hence, the issues with buildings for custodial staff and for maintenance staff, the field issues and so forth, the, the warrants and, and all the other business-related items. While MCAS is certainly a big issue, it was something that had been just discussed at school committee multiple times. And secondly, quite frankly, it was, in my opinion, something that we would need to devote a much larger amount of time than we had available for that particular meeting.
We were there almost three hours.
I agree. I understand that. And that's what I'm saying, is, is to add that on there, we'd still... we'd still be there, is what I'm trying to say.
Well, Mr. Chair, I would suggest, if you would like to extend the olive branch to January, to the school committee, then I suppose we could do that, but may I suggest that the olive branch is not taken, then perhaps, I'll bring this up again, I would like, I, I would like someone, I would like some answers. The community wants answers, and, you know, the, the community, they're allowed to discuss things up at the school committee prior to their meeting. I don't see anybody getting up there. I, I watch the meetings, I don't see anybody getting up there discussing things.
Do you mean citizens during the meeting?
Yeah.
They're not allowed to.
Okay, so when the DESE is there discussing things with the school committee, then how are they supposed to get their questions answered? They're going to just listen to the tape? They're not, they, they have questions, they want their questions answered. And I, I, I beg the council to consider a letter to the DESE to come in, even if we do it now and ask them to come in, or do a joint meeting when they come in for their next quarterly review with us. The community deserves better than what they're getting. Thank you.
I'm going to remove my second and hold off, but we'll support something like this again should nothing transpire by January.
I will remove my motion and, um, extend the olive branch, and if nothing does transpire, yes, I'll bring it up again. Thank you.
Do you have anything else?
Yes, I do, I'm sorry. I just, um, another thing is, join citizens forum tonight. Um, what Mr. Pavlowski did, banging his hand like this, getting angry, that threatened me. No, no one up here on the council should, should ever feel threatened by somebody going to the podium. I'm, I'm disappointed that that wasn't stopped on the first, or, or as soon as you saw his hand going down like that. That was, that was anger, that was pure anger coming out, and I honestly felt threatened, and I would ask that the next time something like that happens, that, um, you react, um, more quicker. I don't know, because that was very threatening to me, I don't, I can't speak for anybody else, but that was threatening to me. Um, and another thing, we're a council of nine, I agree with Counselor Steve's, I object to what went around, what was written, I, I will not even support it if it's even brought to me now, we're a council of nine, we're not a council of five, and I would like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, that's all.
Counselor Strata.
Then I, then I'd be hard. Only peace, and today, all work is the same, work in Southbridge, all of the people, peace, no more.
Thank you. Counselor Clemens?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, a couple of things. One, I just want to remind people that there is a winter coat closet, uh, which is a coat drive, going on, um, and it reads, "The ecumenical fellowship community will once again be giving away winter coats, men's, women's, youth, children, um, on Saturday mornings from 9:00 to 11:00 through December 13th." It's going to be at Holy Trinity Church, which is at 446 Hamilton Street. They ask that the lower-level entrance on the side of the building is used, um, and they are accepting coat donations. I'm not sure of the times for accepting coat donations, but they're giving out coats between 9:00 and 11:00. You can also drop off coats at the Super Clean Laundry Mat, which is located at Big Bunny Plaza. Super Clean is actually donating, uh, washing service, so if any of the coats that you donate are machine washable, they are actually donating cleaning services on, on that wear. So if you have some extra coats hanging around that you have no use for, I'm sure there's somebody that could use them. So again, you can drop them off at the Super Clean Laundry, which is at the Big Bunny Plaza, when they're, they have a drop box there, um, or you can get in touch with the, um, the Holy Trinity Church on Hamilton Street. Their phone number is 508-765-9559. It would be wonderful to make somebody a little warmer this, this cold winter season, as we've seen. So, uh, we had a busy weekend, we had, uh, quite a busy weekend, you might have noticed there's some holiday decorations that have been put out. On Saturday, we had a great, uh, outpouring of support from the community coming out, I don't know, 30 or so people showed up at 9:00 o'clock and some at 8:00, and it was, it was a great day, we got a lot of work done, uh, many hands definitely made light work. Um, and I, I'm going to do it, I know it's late, but I'm going, it, they deserve recognition, so I'm going to mention a few people. Also, um, we did get some lights, some new lights from that light donation, um, one tree has been done as of Saturday, uh, we had a number of people work with Lenny Laporte, who spearheaded that, um, as a matter of fact, Joe Hewlick, one of our firemen, John Matthews, another, John Peretti, and Jason Cantera, as well as Mike Gonya, all worked, um, in the cold at 8:00 AM up until about 1:00 or so, getting, um, old decrepit lights, dangerous lights down, and putting up some of the new lights. Uh, we have lots more to put up, and hopefully, um, we'll get some more done before this holiday season. So thank you and a big shout-out to you guys for bringing equipment and working hard for the community to make it a brighter Christmas, um, holiday season. So, we had a bunch of others, let's see, um, we had Mark Moore and Patricia O'Brien, uh, we had Evelyn Petrelli, Mike Raleigh, Kelly Spinelli, Pat Spinelli, Larry Spinelli, Bonnie Spinelli, Mike St. Laurent, Dick Whitney, Jeff Blanchard, Kaylee Blanchard, Dan Blanchard, Chris Brier, um, let's see, Jill, Jillian Chapaka, Bob Clemens, thanks, dear, Mason Clemens, Dick Cowett, of course, was there leading the charge, Rainey Farren, Hector Figueroa, Diane Gagnon, Russ Gagnon, Dan Grabowski, and Kevin Gravel, and we also had a number of people from, thank you very much, Counselor Carrasco, his wife Rebecca, recruited a number of volunteers, so along with herself, we had Coral Brown, Junior Fabian, Denise Gomez, Luz Gomez, Brett Tomo, Azita Roberts, Angel Ramos, and Wilfredo Pagan. So hopefully I didn't leave anybody out, we appreciate all your help, um, most of the work was done on, on, um, Saturday and a little bit more. Michael, thank you out there, um, for helping on Saturday with your worker to get the train out, and we just appreciate all the cooperation that we had. So, keeping that in mind, don't forget, we have a tree lighting coming up on November 30th, um, you'll see this bulletin is going on to the cable access, it's, uh, the parade will start, or the Santa arrival will start at 5:00 o'clock down on Main Street and heading over to the, to the, um, Town Common to enjoy Santa Claus, to enjoy music, cocoa cookies by the conference center, and wonderful pictures by Village Photo. So thank you, and we hope to see you all November 30th, happy Thanksgiving.
Counselor Carrasco?
Counselor Recce has given me the stare, he says, hurry up. Well, this is, this has been an interesting night, it's, I believe it's worth it for our community, um, and if, this is, again, it's been an interesting night, but I have, um, two things that I want to quickly, um, oh, sorry, three. First of all, I want to wish our community a happy Thanksgiving. This is our last meeting prior to Thanksgiving, um, and with that being said, um, last year I was, I had the privilege of, um, being part of a group that served 112 meals, um, to our community, where we opened up and we had a, a free community, um, Thanksgiving Day meal. And this year, um, it is interesting and awesome that we're able to partner with the YMCA, who is going to be open on Thanksgiving morning, um, and they will be, um, for those that come to the YMCA, um, they're open at 6:00 in the morning till 10:00 in the morning, eh, 10:00, 6:00 AM to 10:00 AM, and anybody that comes to the YMCA, they're asking them to come and bring a, a non-preserveable food item where they're going to be, um, collecting for the food share. So they, and then they graciously opened up their space so we can also have the meal there. Um, so we will have our Thanksgiving community meal from 11:00 in the morning till 12:30. Um, in, in the afternoon, um, we will have three different types of turkey, uh, fried, stewed, and baked, uh, we will have, uh, pork, ham, um, and all the fixings. We're going to try to, um, do as much as we can for our community, again, it's free, come on down, and if, it's, it's geared for those that don't have family, that those don't have somebody to share a meal with, um, come on down, ask some questions, we'll have people that are just going to be there, so you can just have some fellowship and give thanks for your community, and that's why we do it. We want to thank, uh, we, we, we're giving thanks to our community for what we have before us, so. Um, and another thing, you know, um, I hope to see the community out on Saturday night, uh, I'm excited, um, I'm starting to stretch already, uh, I have not, I've never played football in my life, uh, but I, I have played football, and I, I've, I've seen a couple videos, um, I don't think, knowing Sean, I don't think you'll be able to convince him in regards to his coaching techniques, uh, but, uh, I think, you know, we're going to have a great time, um, I'm proud to be a member of this Southbridge community, and I'm going to be so proud to wear red and white on Saturday, representing Southbridge, in this big old turkey bowl. Um, I'm, I'm excited, because, you know, back when I went to school, Pioneer Pride was huge, and I'm excited to be able to bring it back to our old stomping grounds, McManfield, and you know what? I'm going to guarantee you something, and I know I shouldn't do this, but we're going to come back in December with a victory. We are not losing to Webster.
Thank you. And I'm also thrilled to hear that, that, uh, school committee member Abramson has volunteered to be the head cheerleader. I'm hoping that the skirt fits quite well. Moving on to agenda item number 17, discussion of the next meeting date, Monday, December 8th. I'm sorry, that's your, your line. Go ahead.
It is Monday, December 8th, 2014, at 7:00 PM here in council chambers.
And agenda item number 18 is adjournment.
Second.
Second. All in favor? We are adjourned, thank you.